The council will come to your order. Madam Clerk, please take a quorum roll call.
The quorum is now open. The quorum roll call is now open. Please use your e-device. If you need help, please raise your hand. The vote is now open.
Present.
I will now take a voice vote for those who did not vote on the e-device. Alderwoman Pat Dow. Alderwoman Dow is present. Alderman Robinson, not present. Alderman Hall?
Present.
Oh, got you Alderman Hall. I know you're eager. We got you. Alderman Mitchell? Alderman Mitchell is present. Alderwoman Gutierrez? Alderman Curtis, not present. Alderman Curtis is present. On remote. Alderman Sichu Lopez? Alderman Sichu Lopez is present. Alderman Talafaro? Not present. Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez? Rodriguez Sanchez is present. Alderman Spisato?
Next Spisato there.
Alderman Spisato is present. Alderman Robinson is present. I'm marking you. Anyone else that stepped into chambers? Okay. The vote is now closed. Your mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. There are forty-five members that are, forty-six members that are present here. So we do have a quorum. There are three alders that wish to participate remotely. Alders Talifaro, Hall, and Curtis have requested to participate in today's meeting remotely for reasons stated in Rule 59. Can I get a motion to approve their remote participation and have them added to a quorum? The chair recognizes Alder Rodriguez. It's been moved to allow these three alders to participate remotely. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. All those opposed say nay. All those opposed say nay. In the opinion of the chair, the ayes have it. Madam Clerk, please mark those alders present who are participating remotely to be part of the quorum roll call. And with that, let's please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Please remain standing for the invocation which will be delivered today by Pastor Leverett, I'm sorry, Bryant of the First Timothy Missionary Baptist Church.
Good afternoon. We welcome you all to the chamber as we welcome God. Erbs in Horto says that this great city of Chicago dwells in the middle of a garden, and we pause to have conversation with God as Jesus does in the middle of the Garden of Gethsemane. So let us pray. God, we need you on this morning, this afternoon. We need your presence here. There are many opinions and many feelings that need to be dealt with, and we ask you, dear God, to speak to us all individually. So much confusion, oh God, we ask you to just clear everything up. From the confusing turns of Lower Raca Drive to the smooth picturesque ride of the Dos Abos Lake Shore Drive, whether we're standing on the six corners of Wicker Park or Portis Park, we pray that you bless our city. As the citizens walk on the bubbling concretes of the West Side and K-Town, we pray that you make the ground straight. While we brace ourselves as we drive over the streets of crumbling asphalt, we pray that you hold our cars together that we may be able to get throughout the upcoming brutal winter months. Even as we endure the never-ending construction projects that forces us to leave out fifteen minutes earlier, we thank you for the jobs that they provide. So bless us, oh God. Bless this city. Bless Austin. Bless Bridgeport, Pilsen, the Wild Hunt, Roseland, Chinatown, South Shore, Uptown, Chatham, Bronzeville, Irvin Park, Ashburn, Beverly, West Pullman. We pray, God, that you make a change in this city. And more so, God, we pray that you make a change for the Chicago Bulls and the Chicago Bears, that we may have something to celebrate. And God, we need you to bring your angels of peace in this chamber. Instruct these here, these leaders that have been elected for our communities to be examples of dignity, morals, and ethics. Reveal the best plan that works for the migrants and the homeless community. Reveal a policy that funds the schools and the police department. Reveal a roadmap that leads this city to be the best version of itself as the world watches. Let it declare that this great city of Chicago, we got it right because we heard from you. Let the world declare that we got it right because we invoked your presence in the decision-making. Let the world declare that we got it right because we were challenged by our morals. Let the world declare that we got it right because we submitted to our ethics. Let the world declare that we got it right because we yielded to your love. So cover our mayor and his family. Grant him wisdom in the face of confusion, clarity in the face of distractions. And we submit this prayer in the matchless name of your Son Jesus the Christ with thanksgiving. Amen.
Amen. May be seated. Thank you Pastor for that prayer and for naming all the neighborhoods that I've been rumored to move to. At this point, we will take public comments.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of thirty minutes. Each speaker is limited to two, three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made public available for automatic review. The first speaker is George Blake Moore.
You have me number one, where you can steal my minutes, manipulate my minutes. Anyway, I heard something through the grapevine, no, through public radio and TV, say the most racist city, Dr. King said, was the city of Chicago. The most corrupt city in America. On the news I heard was the city of Chicago. Something is wrong. If the city is racist and if the city is corrupt, something is wrong with the people. Something is wrong with the people here to let this go on. Now, that saga between immigrants and this Hispanic Rosa, did you know that, you know what that means? When you hit somebody, well, that's a felony when you're pulling on somebody. We need zero tolerance when our elected officials decide to do battery. He doesn't deserve any to be on this. You appointed him as your pro-leader, so I hold you responsible too, because you didn't know what you was doing. You didn't know what you, Chicago is disgraceful. Illegal immigrants are coming in. Illegal. And you know why they coming? To place the native blacks. A sanctuary. Anybody that needs sanctuary is black people. We need this. There's something wrong with us black people. Get rid of all of these black aldermen. We got black faces and high places, but they don't represent black people. On the plantation, you know what the white man made? He didn't make a strong black man. And some of you all still have a plantation mentality. You, all of y'all, now you, oh, you look that race, you think Paul Vowles, I didn't vote for. Brandon Johnson, I didn't vote for, because I know neither one of them wasn't about nothing. And nothing from nothing lead nothing. The most racist city, Dr. King said, and on the news they say, the most corrupt city of all the cities is the city of Chicago. Is that my kind of town? No. No. Does black lives matter here? No. So the system is broke. The system is broke. The white ones are not a piece of nothing. The black ones, the Hispanics, the Asians, all of them.
Thank you, Mr. Blake Moore. Your time has expired. Our next speaker is Norma Rios Sierra. Norma Rios Sierra.
Not present. Not present.
Not present? Okay. Isabel Dobell.
My name's Izzy Dobell. I'm the political director for the Chicago Federation of Labor. The Chicago Federation of Labor is the umbrella organization for Chicago and Cook Counties labor unions, from airline pilots to zookeepers. The Chicago Federation of Labor's three hundred affiliated unions and their half a million members represent a diverse group of workers throughout the area. As the CFL, we fight for the hard-working people of Chicago, from baristas to laborers to healthcare workers. We fight to uplift the working families in our city. I am speaking in support of the paid time off ordinance before you today. This ordinance would remove the barriers for working people to take necessary time off to do whatever they need. Nationally, for the bottom ten percent of workers, people who make fifteen dollars an hour and below, sixty-two of them, sixty-two percent do not have access to paid days off. These workers are working many times more than forty hours a week and working multiple jobs. When a situation arises, workers are often faced with the decision of taking a day off or making their bills. This is very personal to me and my family, many of whom are low-wage workers and miss out on family events, rest, and even holidays because they cannot afford to miss a day's pay. In a sharp contrast to low-wage workers, ninety-three percent of the top fifty percent of workers, people who make over fifty-three thousand dollars a year, have access to paid time off. I want to be clear, this ordinance directly uplifts working people and closes the gap for the lowest-paid earners and strengthens the middle class. This policy will help improve the lives of working people in our city, and it's a choice this chamber gets to make. Chicago is a pro-worker city. Our workers are the pillars that make our city stand. They deserve a day off for any purpose. This ordinance is a further expansion of the initiative to make the workplace more equitable, accessible, and pro-worker for all. We hope the, we see the council pass this ordinance today and continue the fight for justice for all workers. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kata Trust.
Three eight seven, I'm sorry.
You're fine right here.
I'm good, I'm good. I'm good, I'm good.
Go ahead, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, I was waiting on your go-ahead. Good morning, my name is Kata Trust, and I am here on behalf of not just the Austin community, but also black residents of the city of Chicago. And one of the things that we saw in city hall chambers on today, as well as on Thursday, was the misuse of power. What we saw was people being discriminated against. We saw voters, people get, being disenfranchised for the right to vote on something that they felt we needed to have a referendum on. So I stand here today saying that there is a division in this city, and it is being caused by our elected officials for not standing up for the black citizens of this city. I've seen people walking around with shirts on that says Bring Chicago Home, and that's really about people who are not from here. But what about the people who are at home here in Chicago? Our mayor went to fight for billions of dollars for migrants. Who's going to fight for monies for the black community? Who has been melted out time after time? What we're saying to you is, we are tired. I don't know if you're gonna continue to disenfranchise us, continue to not hear us, continue to pretend that our voices don't matter, but what we are saying to you when we show up today in numbers, we are saying that you're not going to continue to ignore us. You're not going to continue to pretend like our voices don't count. We are here today to tell you that not only do we count, we're not only here to say it, but we're here to show it. While you guys are building coalitions within city council to help out people who don't live here, you better be building coalitions to help out the people who are here. Because we are certainly building coalitions for ourselves. Because, see, we see that you don't have our voice. We see that because Amoson Park is still closed and there are no services being provided there, our seniors are still out of their park. And I say to our mayor, who knows me personally and knows that I have been advocating for parks for the last thirty-five years, why you would think that it would be okay for you to attempt to put migrants in my park and not have a conversation with me is beyond me. I don't understand it. But I'll say to you and every other elected official, you better start talking to your people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Howard Ray.
Hello, my name is Howard Ray. I'm from the West Side of Chicago. I don't live too far from the mayor currently. How you doing, mayor? These are questions yes and no. And for the rest of the aldermen, I sent out emails to you guys under CWHPC at gmail dot com. And these questions are, one, are you, what's your priority? Is your priority?
Excuse me, sir, sorry. There's, this is just public comment. It's only for comments, no questions at this time, just public comment.
Well, I could ask a question though, but, so the question is, what is your priority? Is your priority to house the migrant? I think we know what your answer is. The second question is, is your priority to get the demands and wants of the black community and advocate for those? And the other questions are this, we've been, the other statement is this, we've been canvassing the whole Chicagoland area, West Side, South Side, East Side, and what we came up with is that a lot of people are fearing that putting the migrants in the neighborhood is gonna cause a civil war. And it's because they're scared of possible diseases that could be brought in, they're scared of possible criminal elements that could be brought in. So what we're asking is to put the migrants at the McCormick Place and the CCDOC. Now, the CCDOC is a, is the former boot camp place where you can house almost seven thousand people. Now, the thing is, it's up to you, mayor, to talk to your old boss, Preckwinkle, County President Preckwinkle, ask her, can we use those divisions? Because at the CP, at the twenty-sixth of Calavaria, there's a lot of jail cells that's not being used. So, the other thing is this, why do we have to have a referendum when we can vote today on to end a sanctuary city? Referendum to me is a, is a, is a, is a time to waste, because even with the referendum, we still, it still doesn't hold any teeth. But if you use your executive power or the alderman, use this to, use this on a budget, if, if the aldermen say we wanna earmark this with the budget, then we should earmark it with the budget. So forget about the referendum. And the other thing is, what I got, fifty-six, yeah, mayor, mayor, hold on, yeah, mayor, hold on. But if you can nod your head, if you can nod your head, would the CCDOC and the McCormick Place be good? Because there we can quarantine the people and get the medical help as far as vaccination, and then we can fingerprint them. Yeah, I know, I know. All right, so, it ain't over yet, hold on one minute. So, so, there's some people that want me to ask this. It says Article Four, Section Four, the Constitution requires government to protect and defend our borders. If government does not, the Constitution by virtue of the name part herein authorize the free citizen to defend themselves and to stay in place of treason government. No, and not.
Thank you so much, sir. Your time has expired. The next up speaker is Andre Smith.
How you doing? My name is Andre Smith. As Democrats, we talk about the Republicans suppressing the vote. That's exactly what we done today. Democrats suppressed other Democrats' votes and from voting against sanctuary city. We have a right as legal citizens in Chicago to vote whether we want a sanctuary city or not. You cannot suppress nor deny our vote. You must put it to the floor and allow us, and put it in a referendum, and allow us as residents, the same residents that voted for you to be representing us. Now, 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 number two, number two. Number two. Alderman Sarosa, or Rosarosa, or whatever your name. You really don't even deserve a name at this point. If you are truly, truly sorry, and you really, really wanna be forgiven, show us your text message before the assault and after the assault. Show us the text messages. That, because there had to be a plan for you to do what you had to do, and not out of time, since you have conversations on your cell phone and that's part of public, we can, we can, public records, show us your texts before the assault and after the assault. Thank you.
Next up, the next speaker is Antonio Gutierrez. Antonio Gutierrez.
Antonio Gutierrez is not present.
Next speaker is Rashad Priak.
Okay, attention mayor, Chicago should not remain a sanctuary city. I yield my time.
Okay, next speaker is Mama Evangel Yar Nubian. Go ahead.
Evangel. Mama D. Evangel Yar Nubian, hallelujah greetings. As a crimes against humanity descendant, Jim Crow genocide survivor, and member of untreated hard-minded and subjugated race poverty damage, it is, it is written in the Black History Bible book whose hero is a woolly-haired man with bronze-colored feet to match his bronze-colored face, that love thy neighbor as thyself, not love thy neighbor instead of thyself. That's twisted. Therefore, I stand in opposition of the non-binary sanctuary referendum because it is a Stalin technique. Waiting until March will allow a hundred and fifty thousand more sanctuary asylum seekers to join the millions of sanctuary settlers that are already here committing the perfect crime, buying homes from American citizens and voting by mail, using their name, committing the perfect crime of identity theft. Mayor Washington started the sanctuary status welcoming. Mayor Brandon can stop it with an executive order. If city council started it, city council can vote to stop it. Therefore, my, they can, they can stop it, and they should stop it and keep Chicago from being ruined like New York because of this sanctuary targeting. The only thing that should be done, that referendum should be a referendum for the people to recall any elected official that is not impeachable because, not, because we elected them, and if they're not representing us, we should be able to fire them. They are in violation of the Fourteenth Amendment. You have the power to stop the sanctuary targeting. Why don't you use it?
Thank you. We have one virtual speaker today, Brad Tietz. Brad, press star six to unmute, please.
Good afternoon, my name is Brad Tietz, Vice President of Government Relations and Strategy with the Chicagoland Chamber of Commerce. We urge you to oppose the paid leave ordinance before you. Let us get back to the negotiating table and support a balanced paid leave policy that is fair for both workers and businesses. I've said it before and I'll say it again, the business community truly understands that there is a need for balance when it comes to paid leave policies. It's why the chamber and other business groups came to the table on the new state law, and it's why we've been committed to reaching a compromise throughout these negotiations that is fair for both Chicago workers and businesses. But there is no need to rush this and get it wrong. Every part of the business and labor negotiations over the last four weeks and nearly every provision contained in the ordinance before you meets or exceeds the new state paid leave requirement and could be enacted after January one, twenty twenty-four. Again, there is no need to rush this. Yet, even amidst growing calls to delay the effective date of the new state law, as the Illinois Department of Labor has struggled to finalize new state rules because paid leave policy is complicated and is not just about the number of days, proponents of the , of the paid leave proposal are determined to force small businesses, the very backbones of your community, to comply with what will be the most expensive and complicated form of paid leave required in the country in just eight weeks. It is a terribly drafted ordinance and coupled with a full private right of action, businesses, particularly those without large HR departments, will face lawsuits for innocent mistakes effective January one, twenty twenty-four. The supposed lawsuit delay is all smoke and mirrors, and we urge you to carefully read the language. I also don't know if you caught the committee hearing on the ordinance, but the city officials cannot even answer the most basic of questions related to the policy and implementation. As written, the proposal before you exposes businesses of all sizes, for-profit, nonprofit, space-based organizations, safety net hospitals, and so many other critical anchors of our communities to costly lawsuits for minor infractions, and it does not include reasonable administrative and care processes to occur before a lawsuit is filed. It fails to adequately protect small business, small neighborhood businesses by not providing for a full small business carve-out. for a full small business carve-out. It contains costly and administratively burdensome unused PTO payout provisions that are not required anywhere else in the country, including Illinois, New York City, and Los Angeles. And it sends a terrible signal to our airlines, one of our most important economic engines, that the city does not have their backs while guaranteeing litigation between the airlines and the city by not allowing for the same exemption they have in state law. There are so many other areas I could raise, given how poorly drafted the language is, but I'm not allotted that time. We urge you to read the definition of covered employee, for instance, and what it might mean for our convention and travel industry. This has been an incredibly flawed process from the start that has led to an incredibly flawed product that will lead to job losses, less economic development in the communities that need it most, and frivolous lawsuits filed against businesses of all sizes. Thank you for your time.
Your Honor, there are no further speakers who have timely signed up for the public comment period.
Thank you very much. This concludes the public comment period. The Chair recognizes Alderman Mitz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I rise on a point of personal privilege.
Thank you very much. Thank you, please proceed.
Thank you. Today, Mr. Mayor and City Council, I'm going to take a high role of committed public service in responding to the news of the 35th ward alderman resignation from the City Council leadership post. Thank goodness that this unfortunate, negative, highly uncomfortable, and unwanted incident, which was perpetuated against me by my fellow colleague, Alderman Rosa, during the special City Council meeting at City Hall on Thursday, November the 2nd, has come to a resolution. However, here are some facts that I want to share with you at this time. At 9:49 a.m., I was sent a text from my floor leader advising me to stay away from the council meeting, which went to my cell phone. However, I didn't see the message as I was driving in my car on the way to City Hall. My public servant's goal has always been to continue to be a servant and representative of my 37 ward constituents, and I resolute committed to attending the special City Council meeting. Number one, my text message was it. Good morning, Emma. I want to let you know that today's special meeting would not have a quorum. So if you have things to do in your ward, focus on that instead of wasting time coming downtown. Like, wow, but I'm already here. So when we had the first roll call, first roll call quorum, as I came in, our floor leader Rosa came over to me and he says, "Do you know that the migrants get offended when they hear you all talking about them like that?" Hold on. I replied to floor leader Rosa, "My community get offended when our resources are being driven and taken away from us because of this issue." That was our first roll call quorum. As the, the council got in a disarray and legislation was being trying to maneuver, there was a second roll call. The second roll call, Chairman Rosa told me afterward, he said, "You know, you shouldn't be in here." I said, "Well, why are you bothering me?" He says, "Because the rest of your colleagues are idiots." I said, "Well..." He said, "You're a chairman." And I'm feeling as though, yes, I'm a chairman, but I'm also representing my community, which is why I'm here. And if you're going to take, I told you where you could put that chairmanship. Because I'm here to represent my community. No one ever stands in the way of that in the 24 years I've serviced my constituents. I also referred to you, there were Chairman Irvin sitting there, he is a chairman, but nothing was said about that. In between the chaos and the maneuver of the meeting, there was a meeting held for Capital Improvement Economics in 2018, which I was a member of, so we went to go to the meeting. As they recessed the special City Council meeting, because there was confusion of getting a quorum back and forth. And as we were conducting Ecom meeting, someone came in, said they need a roll call again. So everybody leaves out of that particular meeting to come back into City Council. All happened, I had to be the last one to come in that door. And I don't know what video and media showing, but I came into contact with just Alderman Rosa and myself there. And he says, "You can't go into this meeting." Now, I don't know what manhaling and how people said it, but it was more, uh, "You can't go into this meeting." Where I was literally blocked at that door with not manhaling, I don't call it, but more or less, "You can't go into the meeting," facing me. Alderman Coleman came out, and she happened to see this incident. And for whatever reason, I saw Alderman Lopez come out because I couldn't go in, as you had stated, that he moved you out of the way so that I could come into the council chamber. Now, I'm already exhausted from all the things you're telling me regarding my colleagues. I take that stuff seriously. I don't call people idiots, never would, nor would I tell someone about a position of chairman. I've been in this council 24 years. I am 68 years old. I have seen a lot in my lifetime of a struggle. And Alderman Rosa, learn a little wisdom, always take a high role. You don't have to, because we have a, you have said, we have a judicial obligation to come to the meeting. Me and you have sit here and talked about a special council meeting. I'm doing my judicial duties. And with you doing your judicial duties, I told you I was doing my, and representing my community. I have to hear it from them every day, every single day. And if I had not came here, then they want to know where am I? I would be getting protested against. Do you realize that? So, to have me to be put upon that strain, I felt like I was back in the South. I felt like everything in me was shaking, and I literally tried to share, but seemed like no one would hear it but my colleagues. And I thanked them because I had a little bit of hope that I could stand. At that point, I really didn't know if I could do my job again. I didn't. It's definitely, if this what I have to pull up with, if this what women's have to put up with, somebody but to stand up for not only me, but any young women's who get abused. That's the problem with black women's today. And I'm a strong black woman, strong black woman, that believe in fairness, to have faith, to work out your differences, agree and disagree, but have respect. And I could read this whole statement, but I'll pass it to the media and just let them see. I wanted to talk about the highlights and how I felt because I took two or three days. Could have been an emotional mental, but I prayed to the Lord to give me the strength that I could be able to come here and look at you and tell you exactly what happened. It was unbecoming of anyone who's elected to represent people. Because if it happens to me, then who else can it happen to? Or who else have already? And they didn't have a voice, so I'm speaking that voice for everyone that you shouldn't be talked to, dismissed, or de-minimized. No one way. Never let your position take over you. You make the position, the position don't make you. Never. We have titles. No one respect us until we work our titles. And that's what this is all about, putting in the work, developing relationships with our colleagues so that we can understand, not a text. We have to develop these relationships. We are an example for this entire, not only this city, but for the country, and we should not be taking time, taxpayer dollars, dealing with this right now. We should be about the business of this city. But however, we're here, and some dark days ahead, as Dr. Martin Luther King said, and we going down some dark days. It is not something that I wanted, it's something that I have a vision and I saw it coming. I saw this coming. But until we get some law and order in here now and start respecting each other, then we will be having even more darker days ahead. So, Mr. President, having said that, I appreciate you allowing me to be able to speak this morning because there was a time I couldn't speak. So I really felt what women's go through, in particular these women's of color, that don't have a voice, I am that voice for them today. Every woman should be respected. No one should overexert their power or their authority on them because they can. It's unacceptable. And I pray that this council, that we can come together, and thank you. You did apologize this morning to me, first time we talked. And I will tell you this. Action always speaks louder than words. Apology is good, but you got to have some action behind it. And I'm looking for the action moving forward. That no retaliation, no one has a right to retaliate because one speak their mind, no one. And I'm certainly here as one, and I, I'm willing to work along with you because we have to represent all the peoples in Chicago. I don't want a divisive city. It's enough going on now. But we are leaders, and we have a obligation, our community have elected us to represent, and we have to demonstrate that far above board. So let me say thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for taking my time to allow me to speak.
Thank you.
I do want to, I do want to say this.
Yes, the Chair still recognizes Alderman Mitz.
Thank you. I did forget, you see, my colleagues, I had so much love from everyone, I could not even begin to take the calls, from every sector of the city, from the ministry to the federation to public servant to the state, from the, the governor's office, every religious leaders all across the city, organization, just everyone rallying their support. And I want to say thank you because it gave me that encouragement that I can move forward. You don't, you're not alone. But this should never happen again, just never, never happen again. And I want to say thank you all, thank each and every one of you. You've been more than, more than grateful showing the respect as a leader that one should receive. Remember, I did not know how to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Rosa.
Mr. President, I rise to apologize to my colleague, Alderman Emma Mitz, to all of my colleagues, to this council, for my actions last week, Thursday. Thursday's special meeting was chaotic, tensions were high. I dramatically overreacted to the intensity of what was happening in that meeting, and there's no excuse for that. I sincerely apologize to you, my colleague, Alderman Emma Mitz, for the disrespectful interaction that we had outside of council chambers, and for my overzealous attempts throughout the day to try and convince you not to be part of the quorum. I should have never done that to you, I should have never put you in that position. I also apologize to Alderman Nicole Lee, Alderman Felix Cardona, Alderman Chris Taliaferro, Alderman Desmond Yancy, for my disrespectful words and actions. I'm deeply sorry. I apologize to the entire City Council for my actions last week, Thursday, and I apologize to our mayor for letting you down in my leadership roles. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Please, please, thank you very much.
I feel awful about everything that happened and the role that I played and everything that occurred last week. Our Chicago City Council does important work, and even when we strongly disagree with each other on policy approach, it is critical that we show each other respect. The people of Chicago deserve nothing less and have every right to demand that of all of us. I cannot take away the mistakes I made last week, but I hope to be able to rebuild the trust that we have in each other as we move forward as a council that addresses the important things impacting the city of Chicago. I commit myself to do the work, to do the actions. I commit myself in front of you, my colleagues, today to work hard every day moving forward to strengthen the relationships that we have. I'm going to make amends. I'm going to work every single day to make sure that we're becoming a stronger council. Thank you.
Thank you. Resolutions? We have no resolutions. Communications?
I City Clerk Anna Valencia hereby inform the City Council that the following documents were filed in my office relating to the respective subjects designated as follows. Funding loan notification of City Chicago multi-family housing revenue note in series 2023 Grace Manor Apartments Project, and a report of Department of Transportation regarding a non-ordinance loading zone activities. I City Clerk Valencia also inform the City Council that all those matters which were considered by the City Council at the regular meeting held on November 1, 2023, which were required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form, or in one or more newspapers were published in pamphlet form on November 7, 2023, by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the Journal of Proceedings of City Council, City of Chicago. Your Honor, that concludes the reports and communications from the mayor and other city officers.
Thank you very much. Commender reports, the Chair recognizes- The chair recognizes Finance Chairperson Dowell.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. President and members of the City Council. Reporting for the City Council Committee on Finance, which held a committee meeting on November 6, the following items received a due-pass recommendation from the committee. Item number one is an ordinance concerning the authority to approve the levy of real estate taxes for the City of Chicago for the year 2024 in the amount of $1,773,557,000. Mr. President, Alderman Irvin joins me in moving to defer and publish this item.
Thank you.
Item number two is a substitute ordinance concerning the amendment of municipal code titles 2, 3, 9, 11, and 14, which relates to the revenue derived from certain taxes, fines, and fees. Alderman Irvin joins me in moving to defer and publish this item as well.
Thank you very much.
This concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Budget Chair Chairman Irvin, Committee on Budget and Government Operations.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the City Council, reporting for the Committee on Budget and Government Operations, which held a meeting on November 6. Chairwoman Dowell and I move to defer and publish the following items. Item number one, a series of proposed corrections and revisions to the 2024 budget recommendations as amended. Item number two, the adoption of the annual appropriation ordinance for year 2024. Item number three, amendment of regulations governing administration and classification plan and employee benefits for classified positions set forth in the annual appropriation ordinance regarding salary schedules, automobile allowances, holidays, vacation, and sick leave. Item number four, an expenditure portion of motorfield tax funds allocated to the City of Chicago for year 2024. Item number five, expenditure portion of motorfield tax funds allocated to the City of Chicago for year 2024 for CTA. Item number six, amendment to the municipal code titles 2, 3, 4, 6, 7, 9, and 10, the 2024 Municipal Code Corrections Ordinance. And item number seven, amendment to the municipal code titles 1, 2, 3, 4, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 18, the 2024 Municipal Code Management Ordinance. Alderman Dowell and I would like to defer and publish all seven of those items.
Very well, thank you.
Item number eight is an annual appropriation ordinance, year 2023 amendment within Fund 925. Mr. President, I move passage by roll call vote.
Very good, thank you very much. Members, please use the e-vote application to record your vote at this time.
The voting is now open. Please hit refresh and submit your vote. The voting is open. I will now call for a voice vote if they have not vote, if you've not voted on the e-device. Alderman Robinson, not present. Alderman Hall. Alderman Hall. Alderwoman Gutierrez, not present. Alderman Curtis.
Aye.
Alderman Curtis is an aye. Alderman Taliaferro.
Aye.
Alderman Taliaferro is an aye. Alderman Hall, just going to you one more time. Okay, the voting is now closed.
Thank you very much. There are 47 yays or nays. This matter has passed. Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell for a motion to reconsider.
Mr. President, I move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no. This motion fails. Chair recognizes Alderwoman Gutierrez.
My apologies. I would like to be recorded as a yes vote, please.
Madam Clerk, could you please add Alderwoman Gutierrez as a yes vote, as an aye vote for the last item?
Yes, we'll add her to the record.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Chairman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number nine is a transfer of funds within the Committee on Ethics and Government Oversight for year 2023. I move passage by the same roll call previously applied to item number eight on the Budget Committee report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, seeing no hands, so ordered.
Item number 10 is a transfer of funds within the Committee on Committees and Rules for year 2023. I move passage by the same roll call vote previously applied to item number eight on the Budget Committee report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, seeing no hands, so ordered.
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much for Committee on Committees and... We're not doing that. Oh, that's right. Thank you for Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Hattan.
Mr. President and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy, which held a committee meeting on November 6, 2023. The committee had three reports and recommends passage of the following items. Item one is ordinance 2023-0004939, an amendment of municipal code 11-4 regarding radiation monitoring to remove the carnitite moratorium area. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call of the Committee on Budget and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, seeing no hands, so ordered.
Item two is substitute ordinance SO 2023-0001243, amendment of municipal code titles 2, 8, and 11 regarding administration of private hauling complaints. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call of the Committee on Budget and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, seeing no hands, so ordered.
Item three is R 2023-0004566, calling for hearings on proposed rate hikes by Peoples Gas Company. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Budget and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, seeing no hands, so ordered.
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
You know, Alder, Chairwoman, could you just clarify that last item number? Just want to make sure that that is read into the record. R, item number three.
We've got R 2023-0004577. My apologies.
Get that corrected. Thank you very much. Committee on Workforce Development, the chair recognizes Chairman Rodriguez.
Mr. President and members of the City Council, reporting for the Committee on Workforce Development, which held a meeting on Monday, October 30, 2023, and reconvened on November 2. There was one item on the agenda, Chicago Pay Leave and Paid Sick and Safe Leave Ordinance. At the meeting, a substitute ordinance was adopted, The substitute ordinance was passed out of committee by a vote of 13 to 2 of the members present. I hereby move for a roll call vote on the Chicago Pay Leave and Paid Sick Ordinance.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Alderman Hopkins.
Just a second. I want to make sure your mic is on.
Thank you, Chairman. Alderman Hopkins, Beal and I move to defer and publish this item.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Chairman Rodriguez.
Very well. This concludes the report of the Committee on Workforce Development.
All right, very good. Thank you very much. I believe that was the last committee report. Thank you. Agreed-upon calendar. Matters on the agreed-upon calendar, the chair recognizes Alderwoman Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've received from Clerk Andrea M. Valencia a total of eight items proposed of the agreed calendar consisting of contributory commemorative and tributary resolutions from Clerk Valencia and from the following alderpersons: Alderperson Robinson, Alderperson O'Shea, Alderperson Taliaferro, Alderperson Wackespak, Alderperson Viegas, Alderperson Vasquez, and Alderperson Silverstein. I move these in the omnibus, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Viegas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Resolution that just passed in the omnibus... What, excuse me, I'd like to suspend the rules. The resolution that just passed in the omnibus...
I believe we have to get a so moved on that one.
Oh, sorry about that.
Yes. To suspend the rules, so moved.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. The resolution that just passed out of the Committee on Rules in the omnibus talks to the long history that Chicago has with Bulgaria. And in the chambers today, we have the Council General from Bulgaria, and I'd like to see if we can acknowledge him and the hard work that he's done. Council General Vetoslav Stanikov is in the building.
Is it okay from this body to have leave to recognize this gentleman? Is that okay, body? All right, leave has been granted. There's a very fine colored tie there. Let's please give him a nice Chicago welcome. Thank you very much. Are there any other orders that wish to be recognized? There's a motion to pass this in the omnibus. Hearing no objections, seeing no other hands, so ordered. New business. The clerk, do we have... Yes, we do. All right, very well.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Alderman Beal has a proposed ordinance amending municipal code chapter 2, 173, repealing in its entirety referred to the Committee on Immigrant Rights. Alderman Beal has an ordinance, has a proposed ordinance referred to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate for the construction of affordable family homes by Hope Center Foundation. Alderman Quinn has a proposed ordinance amending municipal code chapter 2-173 by repealing it in its entirety recommended to the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Alderman Lopez has a proposed ordinance amending municipal code chapter 2.173, repealing it in its entirety referred to the Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights. Alderman Moore has a proposed ordinance amending 2024 budget recommendations regarding grant to Chicago Park District for development of Field House at Ogden Park referred to the Committee on Budget. Alderman Tabarez has a proposed ordinance designating various precincts of the 23rd Ward as restricted residential zones, prohibiting shared housing and vacation rentals recommended to the Committee on License. Alderman Tabarez has a proposed ordinance designating the 8th precinct of the 23rd Ward as a restricted cannabis zone referred to the Committee on License. Alderman Tabarez has a proposed ordinance repealing municipal code chapter 2.173 in its entirety referred to the Committee on Public Safety. Alderman Viegas and others has a proposed ordinance directing the Superintendent of Police to rescind and reissue Chicago Police Department General Order G 03-03-1, Emergency Vehicle Operations with Clear Pursuit Guidelines, referred to the Committee on Police and Fire. Alderman Spazado has a proposed ordinance amending municipal code chapter 2-173 by repealing it in its entirety referred to the Committee on Rules. Alderman Napolitano has a proposed ordinance introducing an amendment of the municipal code chapter 2-173, repealing it in its entirety to the Committee on Safety. Alderman Riley has a proposed ordinance introducing a municipal code agreement to repeal chapter 2-173 in its entirety referred to the Committee on Public Safety. Your Honor, that is the conclusion of new business.
Thank you very much. For the approval of the journal, Alderman Mitchell, for the approval of the journal.
Mr. President, I am not aware of any corrections to the journal from the November 1, 2023 regular meeting and move that it be approved.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. And for unfinished business, Alderman Mitchell.
I am aware of three items of unfinished business. The first item of unfinished business was filed by Alderman Hattan and calls for a vote on R 2023-0004166, which was deferred and published on November 1, 2023.
Thank you. Alderman Hall has his hand raised. The chair recognizes Alderman Hall.
Mr. President, I ask to be added as a yes on the roll call vote of the eighth item in budget and the subsequent votes.
Very good. For the first favorable item, please add Alderman Hall as an aye vote. Madam Clerk, thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Hattan.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues. We are looking to take a vote on this item today. So many of you know, we passed this through committee. We've been working on the Bring Chicago Home ordinance for a long time. I want to remind folks just what it is. We're looking to put a referendum question on the ballot for our voters to tell us whether they think we should make changes, including some decreases and increases to the real estate transfer tax so that we can create a dedicated source of funds to help Chicagoans experiencing homelessness and to prevent homelessness. So, Mr. President, I move passage of this item unless others would like to speak on it. I see a hand.
Very much. The chair recognizes Alderman Hopkins.
No, Stone.
Did I get that right? Alderman Robinson, my apologies. That's embarrassing.
Mr. President, I would like to be recorded as a yes on item eight on the Budget Committee report. Thank you.
Very good much. Clerk, please add Alderman Robinson as a yes vote on the first favorable item. Now, the chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to thank my colleague Maria Hattan for her work on this. When she first brought it to me, it was... I immediately signed on because I know that we have to help our homeless population. But as we got deeper into this, and this but does not go without me supporting this to put on the ballot, but there's some things we have to do as we come back to council on this because it's just a, right now, an opportunity for the people to hear. But although we made financial implications in this, and it was, as I exhausted this at the last committee meeting, we learned that we had to do something by state statute and put a amount in there because I was asking, why do we have to put money in there? So as I stand to support it, I am still, like, a little not happy about that we made a decrease in this and we had, and we put that into the ordinance. The decrease by statute didn't have to go into the ordinance. If our focus is on getting money for the homeless, then we shouldn't have been decreasing anything. And as I talked to realtors, specifically the ones from my community, wouldn't have made an impact, does not make much of an impact anyhow. And they are concerned more about this ordinance helping the homeless than them having that cut. I also was concerned about the impact that it would have on investments in communities like Inglewood, like Auburn-Gresham, like Chicago Lawn. After having conversations with several people, including probably the only African woman who owns a title company, and she has both an interest in this in terms of closings as well as an investor, I was comfortable with her comments and things that she talked about to saying, David, this is fair. But it's only fair, Alderman, if it's going to help the people, if it's going to get directly to the homeless people in Chicago. As I began to talk to other people in the... As I began to talk to other people in the housing space, other professionals, I was disturbed to find out there was national organizations and activists pushing this ordinance and making sure that monies that we got did not go towards shelters. This money has to go towards shelters as well. And so when I hear people talking those things who are in the room, and our thing in Chicago, we cannot let national people push what Chicago does. And so it's important that this money goes to not only shelters, but also to making sure that we house people. And whatever committee that we're having and that's being set up, should the people of Chicago vote on this, I want to make sure that I'm sitting on that committee. The other thing that I want to talk about in all of this, and Mr. President, it's important. I know we're not voting and we didn't pass the CPI. A lot of decisions that was made with us, Bring Chicago Home or other things, was tied to that CPI. And so the fact that we do not have the CPI in this budget is a problem, because it's going to create more problems, you all. And at the end of the day, when we're kicking the can down the road, other people are going to come back. What we have to raise taxes by $500 and $600 million are going to be hurt. The other part I'm not hearing is, when we talk about that impacts this, is the downtown area. The previous administration had a plan to make sure that revitalized the La Cee corridor. What I'm hearing, that may be impacted. What I'm hearing, and I believe in taking tip dollars when it's necessary, but when there was a plan to revitalize that downtown area so we can have the money in downtown to help our homeless, to create investment, when I see that in jeopardy, I see that as a problem as well. And also, the timing of this. Sometimes, when you're in good times, I remember under the Emmanuel administration, when this was brought up as well, which we were in good times. Understand that a lot of our developers in downtown and even in our neighborhoods, properties are hurting. But we're going to leave this question to the people. And whatever the people decide, if they decide yes, then I definitely want to make sure I'm in that room on any committee when decisions are being made about how this money is being applied. Not outside organizations, but the people in this council. Thank you so much. And Alder Maria Haddon, I commend you on your work on this, the way you handled yourself anywhere, the people agreed or disagreed, and how you got information out. And I stand in support of this with those items that I talked about, to make sure that we're looking at as we move forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Alderman Mosley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pursuant to Rule 33 of the City Council Rules of Order, I move to accept a substitute ordinance for S02023-0005042 that was circulated by the Sergeant at Arms by the first most favorable vote of the Committee on Finance. The substitute simply provides that on or before October 31st, 2024, the city must donate the subject property to the Far South Community Development Corporation for the redevelopment as the proposed Morgan Park Commons. Any other sale, lease, or disposition of the property will require City Council approval.
So, thank you, Alder. So, you're just a little ahead of me a little bit? That's okay. So, I'm going to say that that is out of order, but we will get to that, I promise you. Okay? So are there any other orders that wish to speak to the initial motion? Okay? Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
You all are in luck. I broke my microphone. All right. Good afternoon, Mr. President. Good afternoon, members of the City Council.
Good afternoon.
I don't think there is a person in this chamber who doesn't believe that we should be finding ways to address homelessness in the city of Chicago. I know, even under the last administration, I sat in this room with my colleague when a special meeting was called and the then-mayor left, as did 20-plus members, to prevent quorum for a special meeting. My, how nothing's changed. But I do know, what also hasn't changed, is the fact that we still have thousands of people who are homeless on the streets of Chicago. We have veterans, who, as we talked about, we worked to connect. We have migrants who are now sleeping. But we have, at any given day, nearly 7,000 people on Lower Whacker Drive, on bus shelters, platforms, in our alleys. Absolutely, we should help them. And many of us absolutely believe that we do help them. Because as we discussed in committee, we assign $260 million a year towards helping the homeless with shelter, with housing, with services, with everything that is mentioned in this referendum, everything that is mentioned in this real estate transfer tax. Get my good angle, please. I appreciate it. The problem is, not, Mr. Mayor, that we don't have enough, it's that we don't spend it. We don't allocate it. We don't put it to use. And we don't focus on what's right in front of us. The fact of the matter is very simple, Mr. Mayor. We do allocate money. We do put our efforts. And we are asking now for $100 million more to add to the pile that we don't know how to already spend. That clearly, we have failed at every turn to address perennial homelessness in the city of Chicago. The issue isn't the money, Mr. Mayor. The issue is the execution. Execution falls on the chief executive, which would be you. We have to show Chicago, before we ask for more, that we know how to use what we have. And we fail in that moment every single time, and have failed for years up to this point. The problem that I have, Mr. Mayor, is that we are asking for more, as I said, when we don't even know how to use what we have. It was said during committee that barely 15% of the money that we allocated has gone out the door, which means literally hundreds of millions of dollars are sitting in a bank, in a fund, meant for the homeless, for all of the 2023 budget, which has never gone out the door. And yet, we want more. And yet, we say we need more. Yet, we say we could do more if we had more. We can't even do with what we got. So before we start asking taxpayers again for more, we need to audit where we are with what we have. We know that the housing and urban development has given us tens of millions of dollars. We constantly see grants coming before us to be put to the Department of Housing, to put toward social services, and yet, we have nothing to offer the homeless in Chicago. It's not about the money, Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, excuse me. It's about the execution. So I ask my colleagues to consider that when you're asking taxpayers for more yet again, when you can't tell them where it's gone from the first place, and ask everyone to vote no on this item. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I was braced to deliver these remarks on November 1st, when the temperatures fell below zero degrees, when we got our first snowfall of the year, and it felt like December had arrived in Chicago. On that same day, 29 of the 75 new arrivals from that day were sent to police districts around the city, the 29 of them, to the 9th district down the street from my office. And there have been far too many people unhoused in Chicago, even before the buses arrived from Texas at an unrelenting pace and regularity. I want to acknowledge the work of the many citywide coalitions that have been working since 2018 to get this measure heard by the City Council. It's time to put this measure to the voters. My vote today is a vote for the Chicago residents' voices to be heard. But I also understand and relate to many of my colleagues' concerns about the specifics around the Bring Chicago Home referendum and the draft ordinance, the draft revenue ordinance. To be sure, there's work to be done on the final ordinance should this pass, to acknowledge the impact on the real estate and our still-recovering business corridors from the COVID pandemic. And I acknowledge the concerns of our commercial real estate community that they have over this proposal in the midst of the current drop of commercial property sales in the city, and issues with filling downtown office space. Should this referendum pass, we'll work together with all stakeholders to make sure that this does not become something that gets passed down to individuals in the form of increased rents in larger buildings, like three-story walk-ups in larger apartment buildings. If the real estate transfer tax is to be a less volatile stream of funding for homelessness, we have to work to support the recovery of our commercial industry. And if this measure had been in place when the Thompson Center was sold to Google, it would have netted $2 million. But there's not a Thompson Center sold every year. We must also acknowledge that if the referendum and the revenue ordinance is passed, these funds are only freed up to support homelessness services in 2026, and it's clear we need solutions now. And I'm committed to working together with this council to make that happen. We have to keep creating and looking for other sources of funding, but we can only do this by drawing upon the expertise of all stakeholders and see them as partners in solving our homeless crisis. After all, it's in the best interest of our city to have a vibrant economy where everyone has access to humane housing, accessible healthcare, and food security. We understand that these provisions are all the more difficult in the midst of a humanitarian crisis. But again, we need to work together with our residents and partner agencies across all levels of government for the best interests of the future of this city and state. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There are no other hands. The Chair recognizes again Alderwoman Haddon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank my colleagues for all of your engagement on this. I want to thank you preemptively for all of your future engagement on it, to Alderman Moore's point, to Alderman Lee's point, to Alderman Lopez's point. We're going to send this to the voters. The voters are going to send this back to us, and we're going to have to keep talking about it. I do want to address a couple things, and that is, there are 50 members in this body. We're all duly elected, and we all have our very unique ways of how we do our job, how we see our duty. Some of us, you know, look to fix government. Alderman Lopez, I always appreciate you as a colleague, because though we don't agree on almost anything, you do a lot of work. And I see in a lot of your efforts, I want to kind of hold government accountable and keep government accountable, and I appreciate that. I also believe in doing that. And I want to just assure people, though, that it's not true that we have a ton of money, $260 million, that we've got every year that we're holding in a bank account. I can tell you, and I feel like a good 25% of this body has been very active in actually making sure we're spending that money. We are, and our city workers, I feel like it's really a disservice, especially on a day like today, we've been making people work so hard. We've had staff accosted. We lost a staff member, passed away this weekend. We've got every department in this city working overtime to solve these cities' issues. And to sit in this body and talk about how we're not doing anything is a slap in the face to every single city servant that is doing their job. So I take issue with that. I take issue with that. I think about all the people experiencing homelessness, that homeless outreach prevention team, Chandra Libby and her team, the people who've been out over the last several years in the 49th Ward and all over the city, engaging with people, connecting them to services, working overtime to get them permanent support of housing. We housed over 84 people in 18 months just in the 49th Ward. If you don't want to be here, if you don't want to listen, and if you don't agree with us, that is perfectly fine, right? But we're not going to let lies be told on the floor of City Council. We're not going to mislead our public. Yeah, I'm tired. We're not going to mislead people. We have a plan for how we're going to use the money. You've had a bunch of civil servants working overtime for months to come up with a plan. The voters are going to tell us what they want, and then we're going to work even harder, and we're going to come up with a plan, and we're going to spend the money like we've been spending the money. I choose to spend my time in this body, and you all know, we have been spending a lot of time in this body. I miss my ward. I miss my staff. I think we all feel that way. But we're here to do a job, and I know that at our core, we all care about that job. But let's make sure that we are not misleading the public. Stop misleading people. Stop telling them that if they do this thing, or oppose this thing, or support this thing, that it's going to solve the problem. I know it's easier to distract people with an action, and sometimes just doing actions. I'm trying to hold my tongue. Sometimes just doing stuff and waving your hands around can feel good when you can't solve a problem, because it's harder to solve a problem. Every member of this coalition, every member of this body, and so many residents have worked hard on trying to solve a problem, and it's not perfect. And it won't be perfect. But it's going to be a much-needed solution. So, Mr. President, I appreciate your administration's support. I move for passage of this item by the first favorable roll call for the Committee on Budget.
Thank you very much. It's been, the motion has been moved for the passage of this item by the first favorable roll call, but there's been a call for a roll call. Madam Clerk, thank you for shepherding this process. And in just a moment, the e-vote will be available for you to cast your vote for this item.
The voting is now open. The voting is now open. Please use your e-device. Hit refresh if you need to. The voting is open. I will now call for a voice vote, if you have not used the e-device. Alderman Curtis.
Aye.
Alderman Curtis is an aye. Alderwoman Taylor, not present. Alderman Talafaro.
Aye.
Alderman Talafaro is a yes. All right, the voting is now closed.
There are 32 yays, 17 nays. This motion passes. Chair recognizes. For the second item. Alderman Mitchell on the motion to reconsider.
Mr. President, I move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor, on the motion to reconsider, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed say nay. This motion fails. The Chair recognizes again Alderwoman Haddon.
We have another item. Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. President, I have another Rule 41 for referendum item.
Mr. President, I have another Rule 41 for referendum item. Sorry, I don't have it in front of me if you need to read the item.
Sure. Alderwoman Haddon has filed a Rule 41 notice with the clerk with her intent to call for a vote on resolution R. 2023-0005109. This is regarding the submission of public question by referendum to the Chicago voters for March 19, 2024 election, proposing to allow voters to determine if Chicago shall create a flooding mitigation and response plan. She is moving for the passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Budget Committee in the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider. Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Only half, maybe the other half ladies.
Yeah, the big ones.
Those who are on virtual, please mute yourselves. Alderman Moore.
One of the things I, the senator called to be an alderman for was to make sure that we have democracy, and whether it was under the Manuel administration, the Lightfoot administration, I always called for that. I always thought people, and especially the people of this great city should have their voices heard. Whether people vote for it, yes or no, they just got to have the guts to stand up and vote yes or no. That's all it takes. And for us to overlook what, the item that people are asking to be on the referendum, to ask if Chicago should continue to be a sanctuary city, is something that we cannot ignore to put something of a mediocre common sense issue on the referendum. To me, that is a slap in the face to the residents of the city of Chicago. And listening to constituents out there, it is not a race thing, it's a, it's a Chicago thing. It's a Chicago thing in terms of residents in Chicago want to hear their voices heard. So asking them for mitigation on flood control over a sanctuary city, I think is disingenuous, and I would definitely have to vote no on this item. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there a point of order? Chair recognizes Alderwoman Haddon.
A point of clarification.
Point of clarification.
Alderman Moore, I'll say, this isn't.
Direct your.
Yeah, yeah. So just for colleagues, this is not a substitute around the sanctuary city ordinance. This was separate.
Resolution.
Right, resolution. This was separate from that. And I just also, this, there is still room on the ballot for another question, so this is also not crowding out. I will say that with the significant flooding that we've seen over the last two years, and especially with some, even with the emergency city resources and responses that the mayor and Streets and San put towards things, we're woefully insufficient, and that's the intention around this question. But just want to say, this is not a substitute or replacement for questions around sanctuary city.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I would just like to offer up a recommendation. We all know this is a no-brainer question. This is a no-brainer question that we know the answer to, but we're circumventing what the question that people really want to know. And so I would like to just recommend that we hold this item, and we negotiate in good faith and pass the other item along with this one, and come up with a compromise that we can all live with. Now, I'm extending the olive branch to try to come together and negotiate. And so I recommend that we hold this item instead of passing one and then possibly trying to come back and pass another one to crowd the ballot, that we try to come up with a consensus with the sanctuary city ordinance along with this one that means absolutely nothing, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. While it may be a no-brainer to you, in the communities of Austin and Garfield Park, it's not a no-brainer to them. To see the level of challenges that our folks went through on the west side of Chicago during this past July's flooding incidents, even our own colleague, three, four feet of water in their basement, and this is something that is going to continue, the resources that are needed are not, something that are brought about here locally from us. We need help from the state. We need help from the federal government. And again, this is all about the resources that are needed. If nothing changes, our people will continue to go through the same challenges. So while it may mean nothing to you, go talk to those folks in the community of Austin, those folks that live in Garfield Park. Ask them about their basements, about how their lives have been upside down and turned upside down and ruined, all the furnaces that people lost, all the hot water tanks that people lost, all of the memories that people lost in their basements on the west side of Chicago. Ask them that question and see what they say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alderman Napolitano.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise in support what Alderman Irvin said. I rise in support of what Chairwoman Mitz has brought to council as a major issue in the Austin neighborhood. I've also rised here nine years ago when I told you that 41st Ward, 45th Ward, 38th Ward has been flooding since my family moved here in 1975, every single year. The 100-year storm is every single year now. So I think we agree that this is something that has to be talked about, has to be brought to the forefront, but I think we could do this in council. I don't think this needs to be done as a referendum like my colleague Alderman Riley has, had made mention to. I don't have a single picture of my childhood to show my family or my kids because it's all gone, because we flood every single summer in the 41st Ward. So much so that I created an ordinance that helps with flood mitigation. It is, it's a flood control system that we set up in conjunction with how we do our shared cost program for the sidewalks, so that we can get some sort of flood control done, not just on the northwest side, throughout the whole entire city of Chicago. So to me, this referendum is extremely important, but it doesn't need to be done as a referendum. We should just agree upon it here in city council and put together a group to actually follow through with this. This is definitely something to crowd a ballot. That's exactly what this is. And I'm telling you that from somebody who has flooded every single year since 1975 in the 41st Ward. So I feel for your wards. I feel for them. But this has been going on forever, and now we're talking about it and going back to it, so much so that I had to create an ordinance to help with flood control mitigation on the northwest side or in all of your wards. So I don't think this needs to be done like this. We can agree that we all need this. We don't need to create a referendum on a ballot for this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I understand that Alderman Riley wishes to be recognized. Is that correct? However, Alderman Beal wishes to offer a point of clarification. Is that okay? A point of personal privilege. Chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Mr. President, my no-brainer comment is just that. We all know that flooding is a problem, and I support my colleagues when they have problems like that. But to attack me to say what's important to me may not be important to you, that is the reason why this council is divided now is because of comments like that. I offered an olive branch and then get attacked. I offered an olive branch. And so that's just uncalled-for retaliatory comments when I support the flooding that goes on over there. So, Mr. President, again, hopefully one day I get an apology because that's the second time.
Just for clarification, Alderman says that he supports the work that is being done to prevent flooding, not that you support flooding. All right, just to make sure, I want that just to be in the record. I don't want anyone misunderstood. Thank you very much, Alderman Beal. Chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I want to speak from personal experience. I have a member of my staff who unfortunately suffered the terrible flooding that many of my colleagues' constituents have, and it's been a living hell for her, trying to juggle contractors and deal with unscrupulous contractors and not getting the work to restore her home done in a timely way or a proper way. It is a real issue, and I agree with my colleagues, Chairwoman Haddon and Chairman Irvin and Chairwoman Mitz, that we do need to talk about this issue, and I think Alderman Napolitano made it quite clear. It's been an issue plaguing the city of Chicago for a long, long time. I guess what I would say is, we as a council know that this is an issue. I don't know that we need the voters of Chicago to instruct us to do something about this when we have thousands of folks suffering from flooding every single year. It seems to me that this council could be proactive and work with the sponsors of the resolution on a work group to actually try and make some meaningful progress on impacting this issue, whether that's sending delegations to Congress or to the White House or to the State House. It's a real issue. But I think what Alderman Beal was suggesting is that if this were put on the ballot, it would be 98% of the voters would say, yes, we need to deal with this problem. And I don't know what that 2% would be. There's always 2% voting on something who are crazy. But we need to handle this issue whether or not it's approved by a ballot initiative in March or not. And so I just wanted to make clear that my only concerns with this is that it could potentially, because we have not yet resolved the third ballot initiative issue, potentially crowd out what I think is a very pressing question for the city, and that's whether or not we can continue down the path we are with our welcoming city status and the large amounts of money that we're spending on this crisis, a crisis that's no fault of our own. So that's my request of our colleagues and you, Mr. President, that we all get to work on this flooding issue right away, and not wait months to hear what we know what we're going to hear, which is, people need help. So thank you, Mr. President, for recognizing me.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Byron Sigcho Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I do think it's important for the floor, from the council members, indeed, to lead by example. I think that we cannot allow bigotry, we cannot allow hate and misinformation to guide the decisions of the council. Indeed, I agree with my colleague Alderman Riley. It is appalling that we have to put these kind of questions on the ballot, but that's as to show us how disconnected is the federal government from the communities that we're serving. That's why we have to have these questions on the ballot. Alderwoman Mitz, who is continued to be vocal about the issue of her constituents in the 37th Ward, continue to be waiting for help. At the same time, that we in the council are failing to understand and see the issue when we allow bigotry and hate to divide us. So as we have said on the floor, just as hard as we're going to fight to make sure that the 37th Ward constituents on the west side and the south side get the help that they need for the housing repairs that they're waiting for, just as hard. We got to understand another obvious problem that we see in every, in every police station, that we see all across the city of Chicago. I think every council member is in agreement that we must do something, but what we do is the question. And the question is, do we ignore and continue to ignore people on the west side, who rightly so, waiting for an answer from the federal government? Or do we continue to pitch one against the other? Because I tell you, the questions that we had on the floor do speak directly on the need of our constituents, homelessness, mental health care, and the flooding that is still unaddressed. I'll tell you that at least in some of those questions, we continue to see a failure of the federal government, a failure of the state government. But yet, we are spreading misinformation about what we say is common sense, that we are expected to resolve the problems that we see in our communities. But how we solve them, it is the question. We see and we hear our residents from our communities, forgotten for generations, and they're asking us to find solutions to the problem. So we got to ask the federal government, and we ask again. We know how to address the issues with humanitarian crisis when it's convenient. 30,000 Ukrainian refugees entered the Chicagoland area, they receive war permits, and they receive federal assistance. Nobody even noticed. But when it comes to black and brown communities, silence. But worse, worse than that, is to see the bigotry and the hate that divide us. Because as elected officials, we pander to that bigotry instead of providing solutions. So I tell you from this floor, and I thank for my colleagues, Alderman Robinson, Alderman Hall, who came with me to the border to look at the situation for up close. So we develop a plan that we can put in the hearings that many of our colleagues talked about, in working groups, so we solve the problem. But of course, that's not convenient to the GOP, that is not convenient to certain elements of the council that love to go to Fox News to pander and demonize our city and join those efforts that continue to pitch one against the other. That is what's happening in the city of Chicago. So I will repeat again, I am proud to be in the city that Mayor Washington opened for us so that they see brown people as human beings. Proud of that. And I hope every single council member is proud of that, because that's why we fight for the 37th Ward residents just as hard as any resident in the city of Chicago. But if we continue on this path, when we're on one end, and this is obvious, and on one end, it is not so obvious for the federal government, they expect the floor to provide solutions instead of pitching us once against the other. So if we want to solve these questions, I recommend we work in these working groups so we solve these questions that are pitching us one against the other and driving us apart. So yes, I do think there's many things that are obvious, but the answer is not so obvious as we hear from our constituents. So today I tell you, I for one, I'm going to go again to DC to demand of the president that comes here to fundraise when it's convenient, to also come to the west side and see what's going on in our west side communities, to come to the southwest side and see how immigrant communities are also treated. But I will not accept some, some colleagues who don't need to deal with these realities to lecture us about working groups, but yet push for questions that will instigate more division and more bigotry. We expect better from elected officials. Let's do what works, what's right, but let's not pander to bigotry that will continue to instigate the floors, the issues that we already see on the floor. So I hope my colleagues, look at these questions, what brings us together for solutions and what brings us apart, because we're not listening to our constituents, we're not listening to each other. And I look forward to having more conversations with the Bloc Caucus, the Progressive Caucus, the Latino Caucus. Let's solve those problems and let's provide factual information, but because what we see here, it is not factual, and it's insulting to the immigrant community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there a point of clarification or personal privilege? The chair recognizes Alderwoman Haddon.
Mr. President, I, and I'll just say, if there's more people to talk, they can. I just wanted to say, I'm going to withdraw my motion. Okay? And this is just in the spirit, we've had, we've had a day, you guys. Alderwoman Mitz, Alderman Carlos Ramirez-Rosa, we've had a lot of folks demonstrate, I think, a lot of bravery today and leadership, and we all need to do some work together. I hear my colleagues, I know we have to have another Rules Committee meeting. I would like to withdraw my motion. I'm willing to hold this item, and I would like to sit down with folks so we can work on what we want our last two questions to be.
There is a motion on the floor to withdraw the motion. It's not a motion, it's just something that you want to do? The motion.
Withdraw her motion.
If no one objects. If no one objects, the matter will be held. Hearing no objections, the matter is held. Does anyone else wish to speak to the matter that was held? Seeing no hands. And the chair recognizes... Okay, the chair recognizes Alderman Spazado.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wasn't going to speak, and I'm glad it's held, I'm glad we get a chance to work this out. But as my esteemed colleague from the 28th Ward always says, you're entitled to your opinion, but you're not entitled to your own facts. So this is not just Republicans that are sending people over here. If everybody would pay attention to what's going on, we see it's Democratic mayors from Texas that are also sending people here. So I just wanted to make that clarification. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. The chair recognizes Alderman Sigcho Lopez for the third item. Well, technically, the second item.
The second item. Thank you, Mr. President. I filed a Rule 41 notice with the city clerk's office intending to call for a vote on ordinance SO 203-0005042 concerning the acquisition of property at 11414 South Halsted Street, including the northwest corner of 115th and Halsted Street from Albertson's, the former Jewel Food, to establish and operate a migrant shelter, which was deferred and published at the November 1st, 2023 City Council meeting. We have prepared and amended substitute ordinance that has language stating that the city will not use this location as a migrant shelter beyond November 1st, 2024, and the property will be redeveloped with community input. I move to that we accept the substitute as amended.
Hearing no objections, seeing no... Okay, there are hands. The chair recognizes, the chair recognizes Alderman Viejas.
Mr. President, this is just a question about procedure. So this is a direct introduction?
No, this is a substitute, it's been, there's been a substitute amendment. So this is not a direct introduction.
So shouldn't have the substitute been introduced at the other, at the committee, instead of being introduced here on the floor? Just trying to get what the process is.
Shouldn't it go to the committee?
So the amendment was accepted and approved in committee. What the alderman is presenting now is that that substitute amendment that was approved, that this location as a migrant shelter will not be continued beyond November 1st. Just hold on a second, okay? So there is the element of this particular site that he is adding today will not be used beyond November 1st as a migrant shelter.
Okay.
Chair recognize...
Yeah, Mr. President, I was just, again, just concerned about the posting, that's all. I just wanted to make sure what the process is, as it relates to...
It was on the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Do you wish to offer some clarification? The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. As a matter, a point of order, the item was properly noticed, and it's up to the body to determine whether or not they want to accept this as a substitute, which you offered as if there were any objections to that substitute. Since there were none, moving forward, the substitute now becomes a live piece before the body.
Say that last part one more time. Okay, I just want to make sure, yes.
The item was properly noticed for all my colleagues at a vacation through the Rule 41 notice. The chairman has presented it before the body with a substitute on the main item that was noticed. You accepted, you offered the substitute to be accepted without any objection from the body, so the substitute itself is now before the body.
So there are no objections, there's just a point of clarification in which we provided. Please continue, Alderman Lopez.
Mr. President, unless someone else wishes to speak on to this item, I move passage of SO 2023-0005042 with the approved substitute as amended, as amended, by the first most favorable roll call vote on the committee on budget and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Mosley.
I like it when we work together. And that's exactly what this is about. This ordinance, I think, presented a false choice of if this site would be used and if this body had a choice about it. But Jewel Osco made that choice when they decided to donate it. And there's lots of frustrations about why now? But I'm looking to the future. The future that includes Morgan Park Commons, that is a regional redevelopment project, that is going to be a catalyst for my ward. And I have to first thank my colleagues here, who gave me the support to be in this position today. And, Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, I have to thank you, who met with my community, who heard their concerns, who made commitments and put them in a place where they are good with this. And so I'm good with this, and I ask my colleagues to support it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. At our last meeting, I stood with our colleague and said that if he was not in favor of this, neither was I. But in looking at this substitute, there are questions that I have. In particular, in Section 5, which reads, and I quote, "No member of the city council or other municipal officer shall introduce, and no committee of the city council shall consider or recommend any ordinance or order that is contrary in any way to any of the requirements of this section." Mr. President, I have never seen an ordinance that forbade any alderman from introducing anything on any matter. I've been told by the Law Department that we cannot, cannot make ordinances that preclude members from doing anything in the future, that we have a duty to only deal in the here and now, and that I can't introduce anything as a member that stops you from introducing anything, you from introducing anything, or you from introducing anything. That there's somehow some provision of the municipal code that says, "All things come to a complete and utter stop upon publication." I raise that, because while I'm glad that our colleague is able to come to some compromise, what concerns me is that this section of the agreement says that come October 31st of 2024, the donated property, property, excuse me, will be reverted back over to the Far South Community Development Corporation, regardless of whether or not we are in the middle of a migrant crisis or not. That part I included, but the implication is the same. That Halloween of next year is the drop-dead date for what's going to happen. We don't know that the migrant crisis is going to stop before then. We don't know that the housing crisis necessary is going to stop before then. And because of this section of the ordinance, we can't stop it. We can't say, let's add on three months in case we need it while we need to figure this out. Because the section that we are agreeing to says, no, no, no. No more comments, no more ordinances, no more decisions. October 31st, you're out, and we move forward without you. So I just say that, Mr. President, because this is not, not how we do things. Your own law department has told me, we do not do things in this matter. And if we are doing it like this now, then we are setting ourselves up for precedent moving forward, where if I want to do something in my ward, that I'm going to lock it in for all time, so that no one else after me can ever change anything. And each and one of you will be in your ward, no one else after you will ever change anything. How is that the process that we signed up for? It is not, Mr. President. And though I'd love to stand in support of my colleague today, this section gives me pause, as it should give all of you pause, and I must say no to that item. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
One week, we say we support Alderman Mosley. Next week, we say we don't support Alderman Mosley. Which is it? The man has said he's the alderman of the 21st Ward. The man has talked to his community, talked with the mayor, and have come to an agreement. And now we want to say, no. This is a man that represents his community, has done what we've asked for him to do, signed on a dotted line. And for your information, a future legislature cannot bind a future legislature to something else. The term of this agreement is within this legislative term, so we can bind that site for him during this period, at his request, at his request, to represent his people. As I said, everybody is entitled to their own opinion, but you're not entitled to your own facts. So again, I stand in support with you, Brother Mosley, and I believe this council will stand in support of you, because you represent the people of the 21st Ward, because they elected you, and I'm going to support you. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alder Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe consistency is important. Mr. President, you and Alderman Mosley went and had a conversation with community, and you all made a commitment. This ordinance is an articulation of that commitment. When we say we're going to do something, we mean it, and we will get it done. To have a date on this ordinance, to ensure that this property would be turned over to community, to do what community needs, and to ensure that there is no interruption of that commitment, is exactly what good legislators do. And so today, I will stand in support with Alderman Mosley, and I thank him for his relentlessness, for showing up for community and doing what's right, for his ward, for this moment, and for our migrants. So Mr. Mosley, Alderman Mosley, thank you for your work. And, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Viejas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to stand in support, Alderman Mosley. This site has been vacant for quite some time, and the utilization of the site for a temporary basis for a migrant is something that I know that the alderman has gotten some pushback on. And I want to thank him for standing up for that. And Alderman Mosley, I want to, I want to say, I'm glad you listened to our advice and got it in writing, because this is something that we want to make sure, that as you're providing these services in the interim, that in the future, this economic development parcel will get back on a tax roll and develop all types of jobs and revenue that the city needs. So I just want to say I support this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I believe there are two more hands. I just want to remind the body, I know we're all working in the spirit of collegiality, but please direct your comments to me. Chair recognizes Alderman Lawson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also rise to support my colleague, Alderman Mosley. And I think this is a good compromise from where you were. I have a question about the legality of those phrases, though. And since this is the first time the body is seeing this language, I don't know if it's appropriate to ask the opinion of the Corporation Council. I've seen a lot of ordinances, I don't recall seeing this language ever as standard, and so I would just like that clarification, while we make sure we get this right.
Yes, so Corporation Council has articulated to me, much like the alderman of the 28th Ward has already expressed, it doesn't preclude a body from introducing an ordinance to impact this particular ordinance. What it does is, it does lock in a commitment at the request of the alder for this particular site, so that the commitment that the alder has made to his constituents, that that commitment is maintained, particularly during this moment.
Absolutely.
So it is, it is language that has been used before, it's not unprecedented. Thank you very much. I have one more hand, I believe, the chair, two more persons. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I too rise to say that I support you, Alderman Mosley. One thing that you did in this ordinance, we pick and choose the pieces of the section that we want to talk about, when we want to make a point. But the fact that you got expedited zoning and permitting ensures that your community is going to see the Morgan Park, or whatever it's called, the Morgan Park Commons development happen. Many of us don't take it that far, and the fact that you were able to secure those kind of commitments out of the administration and out of the departments, I admire you for that, and for that reason, I'll be supporting you through this effort. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alderman Spazado, as you direct your comments towards me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to be somewhat repetitive from what everybody else said, but if you'd caught me a little sooner, I might have been the first one to say this, though. But I just want to, I said a few days ago, I stand with my buddy and friend over here, Alderman Mosley, I stand with him again, but I also want to commend him and you or your administration for working this out. It was an issue for him and his community, and we talked about working together, here's a perfect example. You could have steamrolled him as a freshman alderman, but you chose not to do that and work this out. So I commend him and you for working this out, and I stand with you still, my brother, I stand with you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alder Vasquez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, to also rise in support, what I wanted to add is to really give credit to both of you all, the mayor and Alderman Mosley, for figuring out and setting a precedent that I think is important. You know, we have been talking for months about identifying properties in each of our wards, and figuring out what opportunities there are to support, you know, the mission. The fact that this was crafted the way it was, in a way that allows to expedite some of the process, while also securing the fact that it becomes a community asset upon completion, I think is something that should be an example for the rest of our colleagues, who might find opportunities in their ward to do the same, and give them the reassurance that they can set an end date or a commitment as to what happens post it being used as such. We have plenty of properties out here in the city, schools that could be reopened, community centers that could be created, parks for folks who want to see that. And I think what you all have done together, this city should be very proud of, and our colleagues should take into account, as they look at their own wards, to see what else might be available. So thank you both, I'll be in support, and I really appreciate it, seeing how hard the whole city's been working on this, and the fact that you guys were able to find this agreement. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. So there's a motion that's on the floor, by the way, for the passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call from the Budget Committee, associated, of course, with the unsuccessful motion to reconsider. If there are no other, chair recognizes Alder Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please record any ands or no.
Despite the division, hearing no other objections, so ordered. Alderman Mitchell, are you aware of any other items that are unfinished amongst this body? I don't believe there are no other unfinished...
Except for the ordinance and the date and time of the next meeting, I have not aware of any miscellaneous business.
Just a moment, please. Thank you very much, Alderman Mitchell. Miscellaneous business.
Mr. President.
The chair recogn, just, of course, the chair recognizes Alderman Wagisback.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to be recognized to make a motion for censure of one of our colleagues.
Okay, you are recognized.
Mr. President, first of all, I want to say that I appreciate what happened earlier in our meeting today, and state that I did attend Thursday's meeting, because I was not in favor of voting down the welcoming city ordinance, but I believe it is my duty as an elected official to show up, debate the issue, and work toward a vote. But no matter the subject matter, or where you stand on it, what happened on Thursday should be unacceptable in this body. So I'm calling for this censure because of the obvious need to restore decorum and meet out some form of discipline. This effort is to have this body go on record that we, as a body, do not accept this type of behavior exhibited by our colleague, Alderman Ramirez Rosa, last week. I think we need to make sure that we, as a body, come together and say that none of us should behave in this manner, and that it is fundamentally unacceptable to the rest of this body and the people of our city. To be productive, to be an effective legislating body, we all need to play a role in making sure that we have decorum and discipline in these chambers. And we have to be effective, or in order to be effective, transparent, and productive on behalf of our communities, we have to stick to the rules, and we have to stick to that decorum. Even as the past... Even as the pastor said this morning, we have to do this with dignity, moral, and ethical values that should be exhibited by this body and all people. Now, if these incidents had happened to me or any other member, I would want to know that each member of this body stood with me to have my back, and I think that's what we see today for the other members who were intimidated. I want to say to those impacted by this that you deserve to feel supported by your colleagues, all of us. By standing together and supporting one another, we can begin to move forward in a healthier way for this body. But censures are what assemblies and this council have been doing since Robert's rules were adopted in the late 1800s. This is how we ensure a measure of accountability, through a process and a set of rules that we all subscribe to, that can guide us no matter what or how heated the debates get. And we depend on these rules to guide us and make sure that we live by them in both easy and hard times alike. Apologies like earlier today are very important and should be acknowledged, and I see that it was graciously accepted. But the actions that took place on that day, on that Thursday, do require censure. They were beyond the pale and unbecoming of our colleague. So when we look at what happened, the threats of intimidation, the touching, whatever it might be, on whatever particular issue, in this case zoning actions, that is not the mark of a healthy, functioning body, and we have to make this censure move forward, or we have to have this censure move forward. I ask for your support on this simple measure of censure of Alderman Ramirez Rosa, so that we can restore accountability and decorum within and by these own council members. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. There are a couple of hands. The Chair recognizes Alderman Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise on a point of order, the assumption being that the motion presented before us by Alderman Wagasback invokes Rule 50. In anticipation of that, we did some fairly extensive research. There is no precedent anywhere in city council history that we were able to find where an act of censure was presented and voted upon by this body for an act that occurred outside of this chamber, not during the meeting in question. And that description applies to the act that we are describing here. It took place outside of this chamber, granted, very close, but outside of this chamber, and it did not take place during this meeting in question, the proceedings that we are currently involved in. If you read Rule 50, or if you look at any of the previous manifestations of Rule 50, which existed for decades in this council, a rule allowing for censure for the acts of members, it is focused upon actions or offensive words that took place during the meeting in question. And of course, our colleague, Alderman Rosa, has not behaved in any manner during this meeting that rises to the level of censure. Indeed, we've seen some measure of reconciliation. I would argue that there was an appropriate response to what happened. His resignation as both floor leader and chairman of the zoning committee is commensurate with the actions that took place. If we attempt to censure or expel, based on this right now, we are setting a very disturbing precedent by opining on something, again, that did not happen during the course of this meeting and happened outside of this room. And I will just go back to the language in Rule 50. The appropriate remedy for a censure is to have the member called before the chair of the meeting to be criticized and have his behavior corrected. We also do have the right to expel that member if the behavior continues. Again, none of that applies to this meeting. Therefore, Mr. President, I suggest this motion is out of order, and I would ask that you rule accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a point of order. I do see your hand, Alder Fuentes, for the point of order. The Chair recognizes Alder Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. All due respect to my colleague, Alderman Hopkins. I was subject to a threat where I sat right here, in this chamber, while the meeting was going on. So just for clarification.
Sure, and thank you for the clarification. Believe that the alder is expressing the rule based upon the current proceedings, is what I believe he was referring to, not to the previous meeting. Chair recognizes Alder Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think in the last few days, we have all engaged in a process that has been quite difficult. We have had difficult conversations in our caucuses. We have had difficult conversations with the folks who have been harmed, and difficult conversations with our colleague, Alderman Carlos Ramirez Rosa. I'm a restorative justice practitioner, and I believe that there is a difference between accountability, consequences, and public punishment. See, the censure is a public reprimand. It's the oldest parliamentary tool in the book. We have watched our colleague publicly accept criticism on Twitter, on the headline of every newspaper. If you've turned on your TV in the last few days, we've watched this story unravel. Today, we all stood with our colleague, Alderwoman Emma Metz, and with all of our colleagues who have been harmed in this incident. I ask our colleagues to allow for a process of healing and reconciliation to begin. Today is not the end of that process. I want folks to acknowledge what restorative justice is. Today, that was the beginning of healing and reconciliation. We've been standing up and saying we're in solidarity with our colleagues, and I embraced Alderwoman Emma Metz today. I gave hugs to every single individual who was harmed in this incident, and I say I stand with you. But I also want to recognize when we are beginning a dangerous path of also causing harm. Today, I believe that our colleague, Rosa, has begun a process of accountability, of admitting wrongs, and committing to a process and a path that allows him to make amends and restore trust and build relationships that are important. There has been a lot of tension in this body. There has been a lot of division. And I think that today is also an opportunity to meet the moment, to meet the moment to close those gaps, to heal those wounds, and to have conversations about how we move forward. A public reprimand does not help us. I think that our colleague is well aware of his wrongs and committed to a restorative process that allows for his own healing and the healing of this body and those who are harmed. I think that the censure is out of line. I think that it can cause more harm than it can heal the people in this body. And that includes our colleague, Alderman Carlos Ramirez Rosa. Restorative justice includes all participants in that process. And I ask this body to vote no, and allow the process of healing and reconciliation to truly begin. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Alder Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise in support of invoking Rule 50 to censure our colleague. Alderman, the alderman of the 32nd ward, has said very clearly that we have the ability to do this. Lack of precedent does not mean lack of action. And it's shameful that this is the first time in our 180-plus-year history that we have come to this moment. But let's remember something. This is not just about what happened in this doorway. This is about what happened earlier in the day, when the mayor's floor leader sent a text message to nearly two-thirds of this body, saying, "Don't come in. I heard no one's going to be here. Don't worry about it." Even though there was a committee meeting here happening in that moment with 20-plus members here. "Go home. Go find something else better to do." When it became clear, an hour and a half delayed, that the special meeting was moving forward, a special meeting which was legally called for, every attempt to block members was being made by our colleague from the 35th ward. And not just the physical. We're forgetting that he threatened, in this chamber and in 201A, threatened to withhold zoning projects from three members of this body. Alderman Lee, Alderman Cardona, and Alderman Talaferro. Three members were threatened, extorted, pointed at, and said, "If you don't do what I tell you, nothing is going to move out of my committee as long as I'm zoning chairman." Shake your head all you want, that's extortion. That is disgraceful behavior, to threaten members, threaten them with their projects, threaten them with their chairmanships, threaten them as members of this body. That is exactly what you just apologized for.
Please direct your comments to me.
That is exactly what he just apologized for. It is exactly what you recognized, Mr. President, as what transpired. That is why the apology included all three of them, in addition to our colleague from the 37th ward. This is not just a matter of, "I lost my temper and was dumb." We have seen this pattern before, and we are talking about it because the rules state, since we're talking about them, any member acting or appearing in a lewd or disgraceful manner, or who uses appropriate, obscene, or insulting language to or about any member of the council. Did we forget the idiots in the room? From our colleague's own mouth, that is how he referred to us that day, trying to be here. What isn't disgraceful about what transpired? What isn't obscene about how he called you? On a day we were officially here, this wasn't at some bar talking about us over drinks, we were here in a special meeting, trying to do the work of the people. There was an organized effort to destabilize the legitimacy of the work going on in this room, and only one person is at the epicenter of that. You can talk about restorative justice all you want. You could talk about the need to bring people together and reconcile the situation. Fine. But you cannot do that unless the person is willing to accept what they did is wrong. And the fact that he was still making phone calls up through Sunday night to every member, well, 49 of you, anyway, trying to rationalize what happened, trying to question the victim of what happened, to ignore what he had done to several other people, tells me, ladies and gentlemen, there is no acceptance of responsibility, only an acceptance of being caught. And that he, that our colleague was working feverishly for three days under the silence of this building to try and garner support to avoid this moment. A moment that we all learn in kindergarten, which is to keep your hands to yourself. We have seen such an organized effort, caucus versus caucus, to avoid this moment. We have seen where threats are being made, accusations of sexual harassment by our other colleague from the 33rd ward against individuals in the black caucus, if they did not stop pursuing Carlos Ramirez Rosa. That too should be investigated. That too should be held accountable, because we cannot go down that path, Mr. President. If this has started with one person, it should have ended with one person. If this is what we're talking about, then so be it. But if you want to talk about the forces of division, they were on full display for four days. That is why you need to answer this right...
Second, no, hold on, please, just hold on, you're out of order. Alder Lopez, please finish your thoughts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is why, Mr. President, we absolutely need to take action. Because to reconcile oneself, you have to acknowledge what you did. You have to be willing to repent for what you did. Trying to find justification, trying to spin a narrative, trying to change the conversation and blame the victim, and find every other avenue to avoid responsibility, that is not taking responsibility. Mr. President, I support this motion. All of us who were here know exactly what happened. All of us that have been, all of you that have been contacted know exactly what I've said, and we've seen exactly that in terms of everyone who's come forward just in the last four days. There's a stain on the soul of this room right now, Mr. President. It must be purged. It must be cleaned, and it must be censured immediately. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Alder Sixto Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. And first, let me, let me say again, I'm really proud of Alderwoman Metz, as well as Alderman Carlos Ramirez Rosa. Also proud of the efforts of council members in despite of all the challenges. Alderman, Alderman across the city are facing, and communities across the city, many challenges. But it is clear that the forces of division are at a display, as you can see it, and actions speak louder than words. I've seen many things in the last four years in the council. In fact, former elector officials, and I'm not going to mention names, I think it would be easy to distinguish, that also fulfill threats, that also actually executed extortion associated by the same very members in the chamber. I would like to thank, in this moment especially, Alderman Mosley, for working with his community, for working with the mayor's office to find common ground. And as we're turning the page, because I'm confident that the city council can listen just, not only to the legal opinion, I agree with Alderman Hopkins about the dangerous precedent that we set. But also it's problematic that a few individuals in this chamber still have not owned to their actions, and to continue to flare the tensions and divisions instead of bringing us all together. I'm proud again, Alderwoman Metz, for helping us turn the page. I'm proud Alderman Carlos Ramirez Rosa, who is owning his actions. And I'm still waiting for apologies from a few other members that had the audacity to lecture others, but still has not apologized to this body, but their own actions flaring this division. So as we turn the page, and I know that we will, and our constituents are watching us coming together once again, our caucuses, Latino caucus, progressive caucus, Black caucus, we're seeing actions, and I will want to make sure that people see and hear the words in front of us, those who want to have it both ways, and those who are actually owning responsibility in a time of dear and tremendous pressures from our communities. I side not only what was legal, what Alderman Hopkins mentioned, but also I want to side what is morally right, which is to honor actions. And I haven't seen that for some members of the body. So again, I would like us to look at the legal clarification and turning the page so that we lead by example, and we look at those who continue to pander and continue to divide us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alder Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleague over here just asked me if I was okay, looking at the look on my face. And I'm not okay. I'm not okay because I hate that we are all talking about this right now, that it was even a necessary conversation, that there was a question about whether or not what happened to me happened in this chamber... chamber, and I know it's a technical rule, but I sat in this seat when I got that threat, and that's exactly how I took it. And I appreciate Alderman Ramirez Rosa, that you took the steps of stepping down as floor leader and resigning your post as Chair of the zoning committee, because that was appropriate. Nobody, and I apologize, I should be addressing to you, nobody should be able to abuse their position to gain what they want. And we are colleagues here, I am not part of a caucus, I joke about the Asian caucus, there's two of us, but I am not part of a caucus. I am, well, I'm with, but here's my point, I'm part of one body here, one body of Alder people. And the censure is the one way that we as a body can acknowledge that certain behaviors are unacceptable in this chamber and as we as colleagues work together. So to my colleagues, vote as you will. I'm not asking you to vote one way or another, because that's up to you. I'm here to speak for myself, I don't ever want anybody speaking for me. So I want you to hear it from me, I am in support of this censure, not because I'm out for more blood or that I think that this is not part of the healing process, in fact, I think this is the first step in the healing process for me. Thank you.
The Chair, thank you. The Chair recognizes Alder Vasquez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be honest, I don't know how to follow some of the conversation. This body has been hurt and broken for some time. We've seen people that aren't even members of the council and have felt a lot of trauma and a lot of pain. And I know that when folks are in pain, for some folks, it feels good to project some of that energy onto others. I understand it. I've had decades of my life where I was that person as well. I've been on both sides, the receiving end of being harmed, I've done harm, I've had to apologize and make amends for my own actions. And so it's hard for me in hearing the whole matter, I'm conflicted, because I do understand putting things on record. But what I also recognize is although we're a legislative body, we're not a jury, we're not the judge, we're not the executioner. Some of our colleagues want to pretend as though this is the beginning of actions that have been this way, it's 2023. We got decades of this council acting that way. We've got federal trials happening now by people who were mentors to other folks here for acting that way. So to act like this is brand new, I understand that we all feel hurt in different manners, I get it. I get that it hurts to be on the receiving end. What I know is at least we're having the conversation, I think it's something that those who are harmed should have conversations with those who have harmed them. This is on a public record. There are headlines that are going to continue, there are stories and connotations associated with names, and there are investigations that are going to be going on that are going to show actual facts on what's happening on. So I don't, I recognize everyone's going to vote their conscience on this one. I think being someone who's been human and made my own mistakes, I don't feel comfortable supporting it, not because I don't support our colleagues that have been harmed, I understand how conflicted it is, I just, I fear that we set a precedent where we cause way more harm going forward. So I don't think that I can support it. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alder Rodriguez Sanchez. Do you wish us to be recognized? Chair recognizes Alderman Cardona.
I want to start by a biblical scripture, John 14:27. "Peace I leave with you, my peace I give to you. I do not give you as the world gives, but do not let your hearts be troubled and do not be afraid." Last week, Thursday, my peace was taken away from me. Reason why, because I'm here to do a job that my residents of the 31st Ward had elected me to do. And like I say, we could all have, we could agree and disagree, but when we're here doing the job of the people, we have to put our residents first. And me, being in part of the Committee of Econ, and it was Chairman Vegas and myself having a hearing, and Alderman Carlos Rosa comes in and he interrupts the meeting, he says something to the chairman, then he comes to me, grabs my shoulder in my, by my, by my shoulder, goes into my ear and tells me what he's going to do. I'm not making this up, it's on video, 201A. To me, once I heard what he told me, you could see my face and you could see my reaction when I, when I, when I left the room, because I was hurt, my peace was gone. The abuse of power, and, I mean, I am a victim here. Alderman Lee is a victim here. Alderman Chris Talaferro is a victim here. I thank him for, for coming today and apologizing and being sincere. I accept that, we are human, we commit mistakes. And as us, we have to learn how to forgive, but we cannot be foolish at the same time. And what I want here for us to do, and it's all about working relationships, you know me, I'm always trying to build relationships with all my colleagues. I don't choose sides, I always look what your views are, I take it back to the community, I hear my community out, and I come back and I vote. Everyone that comes to me is like, "Hey, would you support this?", I don't give you my word. I don't give you, I say yes or no, because my word is my bond, okay? And everybody knows, that's all we have here, is our word. And the words that came out of my colleague Carlos Rosa is not right. And especially what he did to Chairman Metz, which was after, because I happened to come for quorum, she was explaining to me what happened, and I was just dismayed. It's something that I hear my colleague Alderman Jesse Fuentes talking about restorative justice, but I think it's deeper than that. I think it's deeper than that. We have to build relationships, but we, but here's the thing too, Mr. President, this is not the first time. He did it before. Why don't you see Alderman Taylor here, Jeanette Taylor? When they're doing the whole, "I'm sorry, I apologize", did you see Jeanette Taylor? She was crying. Why? Because she was bullied the same way as myself and Nicole and Chris, Alderman Chris Talaferro, by our colleagues Carlos Rosa. The difference is, he got caught. You know, I tried to establish relationship with him since I got elected, I thought we were a good space. I know he's your floor leader, he was your floor leader, and Thursday, he was here trying to, not to have quorum or for us not to do our, whatever it is, but he was here doing the job. I don't take that away from him, he was doing what he has to do, but he lost control. And when he lost control, everything went left and right, he wasn't there. And when he came and talked to me, because when I went out in the hallway and I asked him, "Did you threaten me?", he came back and his face, the way I saw his face, I just know that wasn't him. He was, he was frustrated, he was upset. But in times like that, I was scared, I was scared, but I also was going to defend myself. But something came over me to just take it in and be like, "Okay, you're threatening me, I got you." We go. But the thing is, for me to stand here, I'm speaking on behalf of myself. Alderman Nicole Lee, she spoke, Alderman Chris Talaferro is online, but Jeanette Taylor never had a chance, and former Alderman Sue Garza. So for this censure to come, it's not, I wouldn't want this upon none of us. But the thing is, we have to be, we have to have order. And that's why it's put in the books to have order and have respect for each other. And all I could do is pray for all of us to at least, moving forward, to find this relationship and put this behind and going on, so we could do the public, what's good for the public. And to the city of Chicago, I apologize. I apologize to you because how things are going here in the city council. We are here, we are elected as leaders in our community to do the will and the good for the city. And look at what's going on. We need to change, but we need to change in our hearts to make changes here. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Spazado.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is just my comments on behalf of me, not on behalf of the Common Sense Caucus, I just want to clarify that. My eight and a half years with Carlos, I truly felt he had a great dislike for me. I didn't like him either, feeling was kind of mutual. We didn't interact much, but, but, after Alderman Metz, after everybody was piling on Carlos, I, I'm proud to say I wasn't one of them. I wanted to wait to hear what happened. There's three sides to every story. I tried to get a hold of Alderman Metz, I couldn't get a hold of her. But I feel what he did today, I called him over and I said, "Carlos, took a big man to do what you did, I forgive you." Alderman Metz forgives him. I think we have to show forgiveness here, I don't want to put you in this bad spot, Mr. President. Unfortunately, some of my other colleagues feel what he did to them were unforgivable, which I'm very good friends, Scott's been one of my best friends in my 12 and a half years here. And I'm not going against you, Scott, but I just feel, as a Christian, I'm satisfied with his apology. Alderman Metz seemed to be the focal point of this. So Carlos, in my heart, I find forgiveness for you, you made a huge mistake, you're paying a huge price, and to me, that's enough. So I don't want to put you in a bad spot, Mr. President, and I don't need to put him out here in front of us and scold him and censor him or whatever, has to be done, but I think it's a bad idea and I can't support it, I'm satisfied with his apology to Alderman Metz, and that's all I really have to say. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Napolitano.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise and support Alderman Waguesback in the century. If you were here on that day, you could have seen how it all went down, you could have tested to it in your own way. I'm asking you what we're doing here right now. Like to have this conversation right now after you heard from multiple Aldermen come out, stand up and be strong and come out and say how this was affecting them, or how it has affected them, when you know that many people have already got to them and told them to keep their mouths shut, maybe not to that way or that extent, but told them, "Don't do this." You've got people that are victims here. Not all of, like, like Alderman Lee had stated, not all of us are in caucuses, not all of us were chosen to be floor leaders, not all of us were chosen to be chairman of a committee, not all of us are on the inside. So that means not all of us are afforded the favoritism of hopefully sweeping this under the rug and just making it go away. Because I know if it was me, I want to be letting those doors. I know for a fact, I would not be letting these doors, because I'm on the outside. I'm not giving Aldermanic prerogative when I ask for people to support something that my ward doesn't want, because I'm on the outside. And as a council here, you're going to ask to vote and you're going to do whatever you have to, and you're going to have to go home and look in that mirror, if you still have mirrors, and be okay with what you chose or allowed somebody to do to his colleagues. If this is the direction we go after this vote, then you need to strike censuring from it, period. No one else should be held accountable to it. Because 201A is an extension of this room. And what happened in this room, I witnessed too, happened in this room. A lot of us got phone calls, not me of course, of, "Hey, what happened really didn't happen", but then unfortunately, the video came out and showed exactly what happened. So decide how we go forward from this point, because if you vote no on this, I understand it, it is about forgiveness, and I, I will absolutely tip my hat to Carlos for apologizing, that, that's a tough thing to do. But I know if I apologized, it wouldn't have been good enough. I'm not on the inside of any caucuses, so you guys would ask me to leave, you'd ask me to resign, you'd ask for me to never show up at city council again. So decide how we go forward from this date, because if you vote no on this, for what it exactly is and how it's labeled, even though we tried to loophole it as always, like Thursday, loophole everything, it happened in these chambers. It happened in 201, which is an extension of this chamber. So decide what type of leaders we're going to be for the rest of this city right now, and how we're going to have to show our faces to our residents as elected leaders. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Besides Alderman Hopkins, are there any others? Chair recognizes Alderman Hopkins.
Mr. President, it's painfully clear from this discussion that we all have deeply held feelings and opinions about what happened and the relative severity of the acts in question that Alderman Ramirez Rosa has apologized for. But regardless of how you feel individually about what happened, there are other more appropriate venues to determine the seriousness of it and the official consequences. We have an inspector general, we have a board of ethics, we have an ethics committee, and there are other means to assess what happened and what additional consequences should be. What we don't have, what we don't have, ladies and gentlemen, by our own rules, we don't have the ability to properly invoke Rule 50 now in this meeting as an act of censure. And to twist these rules and incorrectly interpret them to do so, regardless of how you feel about the severity of the, of the decisions that Alderman Rosa made, it is a dangerous precedent, and I am begging you not to do that. It would be a mistake to attempt to invoke this rule improperly now. There are other means to address it, and it is my understanding, and many of you possibly have heard that as well, that those means are in progress now. Let that process play out. Do not attempt to improperly invoke this rule for the first time in this body's history to censor a colleague for an act that didn't take place during the course of the meeting. And, Mr. President, I renew my request that the motion to censor be ruled out of order. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a lot of respect for the previous speaker, but I respectfully disagree. I think we all know, I've, I came into this body with Alderman Waguesback in 2007, we spent a lot of time here together. And my experience in working with Alderman Waguesback is that he's not a bomb thrower. He's not someone who's looking to stoke division or to assail people's character, that's certainly not his nature. And people are correct that the, the action of this body choosing to censure a member is a very, very serious thing. We have heard from some of the folks who are on the receiving end of what occurred last Thursday, who've told us, and I believe them, that these things occurred partly at least in this chamber, and that's serious. I also would like to compliment Alderman Rosa for apologizing. As Alderman Napolitano said, that is a very difficult thing to do. And so I acknowledge that. And most important to me is that our colleagues that were offended by his actions have accepted his apology. And so I don't look at this, this censure motion as seeking to pour more gasoline on the fire or to further divide this chamber. I know that's certainly not Alderman Waguesback's intent, but because of the serious nature of these allegations, and because they were admitted to and apologized for, I'm not so convinced there needs to be an investigation by the inspector general. I think the inspector general has lots of other pressing matters to be investigating. We've had an admission of guilt, so to speak. The censure motion should be an incredibly rare thing, and as was mentioned, it has been. This is the first time we're in a position to see it and vote. But we want to make sure that we send a message to future city councils when we're all long gone, that these sorts of things that occurred last Thursday do not happen again to any member, regardless of what caucus they, they serve in, their gender, their race, the geography they represent. We should, as a body, memorialize what we all, almost all condemned last week after this incident occurred. All we're doing is memorializing what we all recognized is wrong. And again, an apology that's been accepted was a good and courageous thing to do. But we are a legislative body that will exist for hopefully many hundreds of years to come, and we want to make sure that incidents like this never happen again. And I think it is correct for us to make an historical note, as a body, condemning what occurred so that we don't go back occurred so that we don't go back to that place. I don't look at this as, as adding fuel to the fire. I look at this as a way to finally get some resolution to this issue and finally move on. Again, there are consequences for, for bad actions, and I, I know that Alderperson Rosa has paid for his actions in, in the fact he's losing his floor leadership and his chairmanship of zoning. But again, we all know what happened here, and I feel for my colleagues that had to endure that. But I think the appropriate way to proceed is to issue the censure, turn the page, and move on, and then resume the process of healing, because we do have a lot of important work to do together. And there are folks here that agree to disagree, agreeably and disagreeably. But again, this is something we need to put a bookmark in so that it never occurs again, regardless of the situation. So I stand with Alderman Waggasback and my other colleagues who agree that we need to, to make this important historical note before we move on and start the process of healing. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, and thank you to all that have spoken to this, to this motion. I do recognize that the seriousness of this moment really requires us to have a complete and a robust conversation around how we bring this city together. What I can say that in the short six months in which I've had the privilege of serving in this capacity overseeing this body, is that I'm actually quite impressed with this body's ability to recognize the opportunity that is in front of us, is to hear one another, to recognize where, as humans, we fall short, and also recognize that very few of us have the ability to cast too many stones. And that is quite humbling, especially as my neighbor, Alderwoman Mitz, has expressed her deep commitment to bringing people together. So I do thank this body for your approach and for your dedication to right wrongs that we all know that this body has historically unfortunately ignored, that everyone is clear about how conduct in this body has left an incredible stain on our nation, on our city's history. But I'm also reminded that in the midst of us working to bring people together, that we also have to extend grace. And that is not easy. In fact, quite frankly, it can be unnatural because retribution is what we oftentimes call for. I am grateful that this body has extended grace and that our colleague has recognized where his transgressions lie. So I'm asking this body to continue to do its due diligence, to not just be reflective of the pain of the past, but to point us forward. So I wanted to hear from everyone because this is an important decision. I do recognize that setting a precedent establishes a guideline for how we move forward as a city. Though I do recognize that this is a rare rule that is ever invoked, the rule does specifically articulate that the rule can be provoked during current proceedings. The question of the behavior and the conduct happened not in this meeting, and so that's why this motion is improper under the rules. Thank you. Chair recognizes, the Chair recognizes. Please, there should not be anyone from the public gallery speaking. I would kindly ask that the Sergeant-at-Arms to make sure that the order is restored.
Chicago is the population of Illinois, and we have to defend ourselves when the federal government does not. Chicago is 234 square miles. Criminals are coming through the border. Mexico is closing their borders. Other states are sending them here. They're sending them here. And you're allowing it for what? What are you allowing it for?
You're getting paid off.
You're going to get paid, and you're going to go to another country, right? This is going to be a murder, and it's you going to another country. You're going to flee. What you're wanting out.
Chair recognizes Alderwoman Scott.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So...
Please, please, there is, city council was conducting its business. Sergeant-at-Arms, please remove.
So the most hurtful thing as a victim is to feel that you, your, your victimization has not been acknowledged. Nicole Lee just clearly sat here and said it happened to her in this room, so that Felix Cardona, you know, and so I like to put it in this terms because I don't think, you know, when someone is victimized and maybe like by a physical or verbal, that you don't think that that's a, a victimization. So when a woman says that she's raped and everybody dismisses it, she's a victim. And so although you weren't, either one of you weren't raped, but it's still an impact to you guys. And so when it's dismissed, it's hurtful, and it's hurtful as me because I'm human. And so these are the talks that we have to have to be very honest, and I'm a very honest person. I can't be no other way. There were six, I counted six. I think all of them were done since I was here. I counted six. And so where I do, you know, felt that your, well, I appreciated your apology, but if we didn't have a tape, would it be sincere? That's my question. And so let, let's just be truthful. If it wasn't on tape, because no one got a call, this happened Thursday, and I don't think that Emma, no one reached out to Emma until Sunday or, or Monday. This happened Thursday. No one reached out to Emma until Sunday. And so it's important that we hold one another up and be accountable for all of our actions. So censuring was new to censure someone is new because I just had to look it up and find out what it was. You know, I'm always the one that have to just take a step back and question and just see what, what is, what, what would be my vote on this, or how would I want this to be handled? But I have a, a colleague who feels victimized, and so I have another colleague that feels victimized. I have one that left because she wasn't acknowledged in that, because she was too right on this floor, threatened on a vote, and said, I, I remember this because I heard it, but I, I'll move past that. But she was hurt, and she's not here because she couldn't handle, because she wasn't acknowledged, because she was hurt. I don't just sit back and watch my colleagues and everything crumble. We do need peace, but we also have to be honest. And a lot of times, we don't like to speak up to be honest, and I'm very honest, and my honesty has always probably been my best, one of my best qualities. You're not going to get it any other way from me. So Nicole, Jeanette, Felix, Chris, who else am I missing? Sugarza, Emma, those are all victims, and none of their, none of their sorrows or nothing that they've done should be victimized, shouldn't, should be taken away. They're victims. And so if anybody thinks that, oh, it was just a, these words or this, it's, it's, the impact is who it affects, and if we don't acknowledge that, then we're all wrong.
Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to appeal the decision of the Chair on this item.
I have ruled that this rule has been improperly applied because the rule specifically outlines that this rule can be invoked during current proceedings and that this matter has occurred already, and to retroactively apply this rule, I have ruled that to be out of order. Alderman Lopez, just, just a second, okay? Please, just a second. All right, I would respectfully ask, I would respectfully ask that you just give me a moment, please. Thank you. Shall the ruling of the Chair be sustained? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
The same one.
Please, please, please remain orderly, that there is a motion on the floor, there's a roll call vote, and that roll call vote will apply now. The e-vote is available. Thank you, Madam Clerk. If the rule, you know, the, the Chair be sustained, is that a yes or a no? There's a ruling that has already been applied. Thank you, Alderman. Thank you. The e-vote will be available. I have made a ruling that this rule has been improperly applied. If you wish to sustain the ruling, please vote yes. If you wish to override my ruling, vote no.
The voting is open. The voting is open. Please refresh your tablet. The voting is open. I will now take a roll call vo, uh, voice vote for those who not use the e-device. Alderwoman Harris. Alderwoman Ms. Harris, say yes. Alderman Curtis.
Nay.
Curtis is a yea.
Nay.
Oh, sorry, nay. Sorry, Alderman Curtis is a nay. Alderwoman Taylor is not present. Alderman Talafaro.
Nay.
Alderman Talafaro is a nay, a no. Alderman Vegas. I'll just put it in. Okay. I don't see it. Okay, there we go. Okay, the voting is now closed. Did I close the vote?
Yes, she did.
I'm pretty sure I said closing the vote. Did we, did I announce closing? I cannot remember. Did I announce that we closed the vote?
He has not read the vote.
But he has not read the vote, but I closed the vote. Okay. I closed it. I did hit the button. Did I hit the button? Did you hit the button? Yeah.
The, the decision of the Chair has been overruled. Uh, this council meeting will stay at ease for the next five minutes. Alderman Wagasback, do you wish to continue to move forward with your motion? This meeting will reconvene. This meeting will reconvene. There's been a motion on the floor. This meeting will reconvene, please. There's a motion on the floor by Alderman Wagasback to invoke Rule 50, censure. And this will be taken by roll call. So if, just want to make sure everybody's clear. There's a motion on the floor to invoke Rule 50. If you are in support of invoking the rule to apply censure, your vote is a yes. If your vote, if you wish not to invoke Rule 50, censure, you vote no. Just a second, just a second.
Voting is now open. The voting is now open. Please refresh your tablet. The voting is now open. Hit refresh on your device. I will now call those on a voice vote that have not voted with their e-device. Alderwoman Harris. Alderwoman Harris is a no. Alderman Curtis.
Yes.
Alderman Curtis, sorry, could I hear you?
Yes.
Alderman Curtis is a yes. Alderwoman Taylor is not present. Alderman Irvin. Alderman Irvin is not present. Oh, oh, sorry, Alderman Irvin. Sorry, I was looking next to the seat. Okay. Alderman Talafaro.
Yes.
Alderman Talafaro is a yes. Alderman Conway. Alderman Conway is a no. Alderwoman Metz. Alderwoman Metz. I'll come back to you, Alderwoman Metz. Alderman Spisato. Alderman Spisato is not present. Alderwoman Metz, you want to give me your voice vote? You don't have to put it in there. Oh, good, go ahead, go ahead, put it in there. Thank you for using the technology. Has all, has all who voted wished to vote? Anyone in the back chambers? I don't want to miss anyone. Okay, that's what I thought. Alderman Spisato, voice vote. Can someone...
I made nature calls.
This is for the censure vote?
I thought I already made my calls.
That was for the motion to take it to the floor. This is for...
Hold on.
Okay. To clarify, this is a vote whether you wish to censure Alderman Ramirez-Rosa or not. A yes vote is to do, a no vote is to not. The voting is now closed.
Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our rule states that when something is not specifically mentioned in the rules of order, the Roberts Rules of Order are to take precedent. And in instances when an individual is the subject of censure, according to the Roberts Rules of Order, they are not allowed to cast a vote with regards to their future, which would mean Alderman Carlos Ramirez-Rosa's vote is not acceptable in this motion.
So our Roberts Rules of Order does not have that distinction, and as, as the vote is pretty clear, the motion would still fail. Chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sorry, but I think...
You don't have to apologize.
...the court council may be understanding Roberts Rules improperly. The city council's lawyers, the folks that work for us and advise us, the Legislative Reference Bureau, have informed me that no, in fact, Alderman Lopez is correct in that Roberts Rules do apply here, and the subject of a censure motion cannot vote. And so Alderman Lopez is, is, is correct. Again, the city council's lawyers are advising us, not the mayor's lawyer.
So our rules are clear. In Rule 51, it says that the vote is permitted by members who are present. Those are the rules.
No.
Rule 51?
Rule 50. I'll, I'll read it again.
No, no, no.
Just hold on, excuse me, Alder, just, I'll, I've acknowledged every single Alder that wishes to speak, okay? According to Rule 50, in this matter, on this motion, the vote, a censured vote by a more majority vote of the members that are present. The rules clearly state in Rule 50, when this matter is invoked, that all members present are allowed to vote. That's in Rule 50. Members present, so any member that is present is allowed to vote according to Rule 50, of which we're discussing. The chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Respectfully, it's silent on whether or not the subject of a censure can vote, but Roberts Rules is not. And Roberts Rule specifically says the, the subject of a censure vote may not vote. Nowhere in that rule does it say that if you're the subject of a censure, you're allowed to vote. Therefore, Roberts Rules should apply. And if that's the case, Mr. President, you'd have the opportunity to cast the tie-breaking vote.
Because I think it's important that we model behavior. I want to demonstrate some collaboration here. If I allow for the Roberts Rules to be applied, Alderman Rosa's vote will not be applied, and then I'll be prepared to cast my vote in the case of a tie. So in the spirit of modeling, I will allow for the Roberts Rules of Order to guide us here, because I think it's important that I model the behavior that I expect from this body in the city of Chicago. And so we will remove Alderman Rosa's no vote, which will move the vote to a tie. Okay, so though it's not indicated on the screen, Alderman Rosa's vote has been removed. And so there are 24 yays, there are 25 nays, sorry, 24 yays and 24 nays on the motion to censure. And it has been removed. Thank you all. So on this matter, for the motion to consider to censure Alderman Ramirez-Rosa, I vote Alderman Mitchell, are there any other forms of miscellaneous business?
From the date and time for the next meeting, I'm not aware of any miscellaneous business.
Thank you very much. Date and time of next meeting. Alderman Mitchell.
I've handed up an ordinance to the clerk, setting the date and time of the next meeting.
Clerk, please read the ordinance.
Be it ordained by the City Council of Chicago, Section 1, the next regular meeting, the City Council of Chicago shall be held on Thursday, November 9, 2023, beginning at 4:00 PM in the Council Chamber on Second Floor in City Hall, 121 North of South Street, Chicago, Illinois. This order shall take effect and be forced from after its passage. Gregory Mitchell, Alderman 7th Ward.
Thank you. Alderman Mitchell.
It's in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Omnibus, Alderman Mitchell.
I move that matters in the omnibus be passed by the first most favorable roll call vote by the Budget Committee and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Alderman Mitchell on the motion to adjourn.
There being no further business before this body, I move that we adjourn.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. The meeting is adjourned.